Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. Again, I would like to welcome everyone to this one-day hearing, which follows Public Hearing 13 of the Royal Commission. Public Hearing 13 was held over five days from 24th to the 28th of May 2021 at Homebush in Sydney. The principal purpose of that hearing was to examine the experiences of people with disability, who are NDIS participants and who live in a disability residential setting managed by a service provider, in this case, Sunnyfield Disability Services. The principal purpose of today's hearing is to hear oral submissions from council assisting the Royal Commission and from parties who were given leave to appear at Public Hearing 13. We commence with an acknowledgement of country. We wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which Commissioner McEwan and I are sitting, and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin Nation, upon whose lands Commissioner Galberly is participating in this hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people who are following this hearing on the live stream or otherwise. Let me deal with the conduct of this hearing. Public Hearing 13, which I have already referred to, was the first hearing to be public in the fullest sense of the word, since we held Public Hearing 4, which also took place at Homebush in February 2020. Public Hearing 13 was therefore the first hearing of the Royal Commission in over 15 months, which members of the public could attend in person and for that matter, witnesses attend in person. I expressed the hope in my opening statement for Public Hearing 13 that all future hearings of the Royal Commission, leading up to presentation of the final report, which is now due in September 2023, two years away, would also be open to members of the public. I recognised that whether this proved to be true would depend obviously enough upon the success of the Australian community in preventing further outbreaks of COVID-19. Regrettably, the advent of the Delta strain of the virus has dashed our hopes of conducting public hearings in person as opposed to conducting them remotely with the assistance of technology. It now appears that the remaining hearings of the Royal Commission in 2021 will have to be held remotely. At today's hearing, I am joined by Commissioner Alistair McEwan AM, who is in Sydney but in a separate room. Commissioner Rhonda Galberly AC is in Melbourne, so once again she will be participating in this hearing remotely from her home. Council assisting the Royal Commission is Kate Eastman SC, is appearing in the same room as I am, but at an appropriate distance. Ms Elizabeth Bennet of council is appearing with Ms Eastman, but Ms Bennet appears from Melbourne. I shall take the appearances of other parties represented here today in a short while. Public Hearing 13 marked a new phase in the work of the Royal Commission in that it was a forensic analysis of case studies involving allegations of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation experienced by people with disability in the setting of a group home. A similar, although not identical, forensic analysis took place at Public Hearing 14, which was held in Adelaide from the 7th to the 11th of June 2021. Among other issues, that hearing examined responses to the tragic death of Ms Anne Marie Smith. It is important to understand that the Royal Commission is required by law to provide procedural fairness to any party against whom an adverse finding may be made. That requirement, of course, applies to all hearings held by the Royal Commission, but it is of particular significance for hearings which examine the conduct or practices of particular organisations and institutions, such as Sunnyfield and the New South Wales Ombudsman, which may lead to adverse findings against those organisations and institutions. At the conclusion of Public Hearing 13, I made directions that council assisting should file written submissions and that the parties who were given leave to appear at the hearing should have the opportunity to reply to those submissions in writing. Council assisting has provided extensive written submissions, which contend, among other things, that certain adverse findings should be made against Sunnyfield and the New South Wales Ombudsman. Both Sunnyfield and the New South Wales Ombudsman have filed written submissions in reply, arguing that the adverse findings should not be made. The Australian Government and Eliza, Melissa's sister, have also filed written submissions. All submissions with some names redacted are available on the Royal Commission's website. Today is the opportunity for all parties who wish to do so to make oral submissions in support of their written submissions. Let me make a final point about the Royal Commission's programme. So far as I am aware, no Royal Commission or similar inquiry has had to deal with challenges of the kind presented by COVID-19 and the lockdowns associated with it. Those lockdowns have continued with various degrees of stringency for a period of over 18 months and are likely to continue for another few months. The difficulties posed by the lockdowns are illustrated by Public Hearing 16, which was scheduled to begin in Alice Springs next Friday. An immense amount of work has gone into planning that hearing on the basis that First Nations witnesses with disability could appear in person in Alice Springs and receive the appropriate support for the purposes of giving evidence. Public Hearing 16 will proceed as scheduled, but it now has to be held remotely. This has presented another series of challenges, with First Nations witnesses having to give evidence from various places in the Northern Territory and elsewhere, and the same applies to other witnesses scheduled to appear at the hearing. Other hearings that we have planned for 2021, the balance of this year, have had to be reorganised and in one case postponed because of the logistical difficulties created by the lockdowns. Those difficulties include making personal contact with and providing support to potential witnesses, especially, of course, witnesses with disability. I want to commend the staff of the Royal Commission and all council assisting for their outstanding efforts in confronting and meeting these formidable and unprecedented challenges that the Royal Commission has experienced. This applies not only to our public hearings, important as they are, but to our research programme, our engagement activities, our private sessions, we have had, held now 564, the processing of submissions, we now have nearly 3,000 submissions, responses to issues papers, we have had over 660 of those, and the numerous other activities that the Royal Commission conducts. The commissioners are deeply grateful and I am sure that people with disability and disability representative organisations are also grateful for the dedication, hard work and skills that have allowed the Royal Commission to continue our work during these exceptionally difficult times. I shall now take appearances.
Thank you Chair and good morning Commissioners. I appear with Ms Elizabeth Bennet, who is appearing remotely from Melbourne.
Thank you very much, Ms Eastman. Can I take other appearances, starting I think with the Commonwealth of Australia?
Thank you Chair. My name is Dighton, I am appearing for the Commonwealth instructed by Gilbert and Tobin.
Thank you very much. Can we move please to New South Wales?
My name is Gail Finesse, I am appearing with Frank Glover instructed by the Crown Solicitors Office of New South Wales for the Ombudsman and State of New South Wales.
Thank you Ms Finesse. Mr Duggan.
Commissioner, hopefully you can see and hear me, Duggan for Sunnyfield.
Thank you. And Mr O'Brien, I think for Eliza.
Morning Chair. I'm O'Brien IP for Eliza today.
Thank you very much. And I take it there are no other appearances, so if not, Ms Eastman, I invite you to make your opening.
Thank you Chair. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the traditional custodians on the lands on which we meet today and we acknowledge and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people following the public hearing today. Chair, as you have said, the Royal Commission held a public hearing in person in Homebush from the 24th to the 28th of May this year. The hearing was the first of several Royal Commission hearings examining how disability service providers prevent and respond to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. The public hearing which I'll refer to as Public Hearing 13 was a case study. It focused on a short period of time from early 2017 to 2019 and its specific focus was on the experiences of Melissa, Carl and Chen, who are residents of a house in Western Sydney. The house is operated by a non-government service provider, Sunnyfield Disability Services. At the hearing, you heard from six witnesses and you also received extensive documentation. The evidence in the case not only looked at the circumstances of the residents, but also highlighted broader systemic issues. Chair, as you've said, following Public Hearing 13, we prepared written submissions called council assisting submissions and the purpose of these submissions was to address the evidence and propose findings and recommendations that may be open to the commissioners to make. Representatives of the participants at the hearing were also provided with written submissions in response to our proposed findings and recommendations. Chair, as you've noted, all of the written submissions are available to the public on the Royal Commission's website. So the purpose of today's hearing will be to cover the issues raised in the submissions, to answer the commissioners' questions if they have any, but there will be no witnesses today and today's hearing is concerned with making submissions. So before I turn to that task, may I outline how we will proceed today? It's proposed that I will make the council assisting submissions and following those submissions we'll then have a break of 20 minutes for morning tea. After morning tea, Mr O'Brien will present submissions on behalf of Eliza. Following Mr O'Brien's submissions, Ms Finesse and Mr Glover will present submissions for the New South Wales Ombudsman and New South Wales. Commissioners, you may have questions of Mr O'Brien and Ms Finesse and there'll be an opportunity for the commissioners to ask questions. Following Ms Finesse's submissions and any questions, we'll then have a one-hour break for lunch and then following lunch, Mr Duggan will present Sunnyfield's submissions and also respond to any questions the commissioners may have. We then thought it may be appropriate to have a short break. The Commonwealth has provided written submissions and indicated that it doesn't wish to speak to the submissions, but is prepared to answer any questions from the commissioners. If there's any outstanding administrative matters or matters that I need to respond to, I will do that and then the Chair will close the proceedings for today. Can I start by speaking about the role of council assisting submissions in a hearing of this kind? One of the tasks of council assisting is to adduce evidence. The purpose of adducing evidence in a Royal Commission is to identify and elicit material to the fullest and fairest manner in relation to the subject matter of the inquiry, in this case, the broad terms of reference, but also the particular matters identified by the case study. There's a duty on council assisting in this regard and we are responsible for establishing the truth or the facts concerning the particular matter and we have a responsibility that may include eliciting evidence that either tends to support or contradict a matter or issue of importance. But ultimately, it is not for council assisting to make findings. That is a job for the commissioners and it is for the commissioners to make the necessary factual findings. The commissioners are assisted in making those factual findings by having the opportunity to hear from all parties, obviously in addition to council assisting, to ensure that the commissioners may be fully informed of relevant issues concerning the evidence, but also what the commissioners should make of that evidence and what findings might be appropriate. Now, there's a wide range of findings that could be made and many are uncontroversial or there's broad agreement. But council assisting has a particular obligation at the conclusion of the evidence and by way of providing closing submissions to identify matters that might be described as adverse findings. Adverse findings might be those critical to a person or an organisation. It's our job as council assisting to put people on notice, that is, tell them what adverse findings we may be seeking, to provide such persons with the opportunity to respond to the adverse findings. And in this regard, I wish to ensure that the adverse findings that we've identified in our written submissions are not necessarily the findings that the commissioners will make, but they are the findings on which the parties will have an opportunity to be heard today. Commissioners, we've provided some fairly lengthy written submissions at about 136 pages. We've proposed 25 adverse findings. 23 concerns Sunnyfield and one concerns the New South Wales Ombudsman. The missing finding touches directly on the conduct of SP1. We've noted in our submissions that there wasn't a significant dispute about the facts in the sense about what happened or when things happened or who might have been involved. You'll see from the written submissions that much of the dispute really is around the perception either of people's motives, intentions or perceptions about the consequences. I'm not proposing to read through or take you in detail through the 136 pages and I'm aware that the commissioners have all carefully read all of the written submissions before today's hearing. What I want to focus on is the key themes. The Royal Commission received considerable evidence about the manner in which Sunnyfield operated at the time of the events, that's 2017 to 2019. The evidence included evidence about its systems, policies and processes to ensure the safety and wellbeing of people with disability residing in the shared independent living homes. Several themes emerged from the evidence concerning how these systems, policies and processes worked in the context of the events of the home. We've set out those events in some detail in the written submissions. Now, in addition to the evidence presented, there was also issues concerning the role of external oversight bodies. I note that New South Wales criticises us for calling the Ombudsman as a regulator and I can easily clarify that we've used regulator as a shorthand term to what we have described in our written submissions as external oversight bodies and I trust the Ombudsman would take no offence at being described as an oversight body. So Commissioners, we focused on eight themes and they were as follows. First, governance and leadership. Secondly, choice and control. Thirdly, preventing and responding to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. Fourthly, complaints and feedback systems. Fifth, staff recruitment, supervision, complaints and the culture, particularly the culture at the Western Sydney House. Then we focus on risk management. We've touched briefly on the issue of CCTV and then we make some final observations on the theme of violence and abuse. Commissioners, Eliza, through her lawyers, has provided submissions and Eliza makes submissions which agree with all of the proposed findings of council assisting, but Eliza seeks further additional adverse findings about complaints and feedback and Mr O'Brien will address those matters, we assume, when he makes his oral submissions. The Australian Government has also provided written submissions. As we've explained in our written submissions, for this particular hearing, council assisting has not sought any adverse findings about the Australian Government. The Commonwealth has said in its written submissions that as a general matter, council assisting should not construe the absence of comment or discussion by the Australian Government about any proposed findings that we have identified as either an acceptance or agreement by the Australian Government with those proposed findings. But it does say that it appreciates the opportunity to assist the Royal Commission with any of these inquiries. It may be that Mr Dighten will need to answer some questions from you commissioners about the extent to which what might be an ambivalence in neither acceptance or agreement with the proposed findings means for the Commonwealth. New South Wales has made submissions on behalf of the New South Wales Ombudsman, being a reference at different times to Mr Miller or such other persons holding that office at relevant times. Also, the submissions deal with issues concerning the Ombudsman's office and submissions are also made on behalf of the acting Ombudsman and the deputy Ombudsman. There is one adverse finding sought with respect to the New South Wales Ombudsman and that concerns a finding in relation to the disclosure of information to Sunnyfield. We note that the Ombudsman's submission spends some time on the issue of whether the Ombudsman is compelable to produce documents or give evidence at a Royal Commission hearing. Commissioners, those matters are set out with some debate in the material. Council assisting is not seeking any finding or asking you to make any firm view in relation to the compelability of the New South Wales Ombudsman to participate in the conduct of Royal Commission hearings or produce documents for the purpose of this hearing. If it becomes necessary at a later point in time, then Commissioners, you may be assisted by a full hearing or full and detailed submissions addressing that issue. The bulk of the adverse findings that we have identified in our submissions are directed to Sunnyfield. Sunnyfield, who we'll hear from later today, opposes the making of any adverse findings against it and says in its submissions that it is unnecessary to do so. Sunnyfield has read council assisting submissions with a lens of seeing our submissions as litigious or adversarial in nature, as if one is determining fault and liability. As council assisting, we're disappointed that those representing Sunnyfield have read the submissions in that way. It's quite obvious that if the Royal Commission was determining fault or liability, it would need to do so consistently with the terms of reference and no doubt a five-day hearing would have been incomplete to make the findings of the kind described in Sunnyfield's submissions. Commissioners, there is an adverse finding in relation to the conduct of SP1. Both SP1 and SP2 did not appear at the hearing, although they were put on notice at the hearing. They were also provided with the opportunity to make submissions for this part of the Royal Commission's work and neither SP1 or SP2 provided any submissions. So Commissioners, what I'd now like to do in the next hour or so, and I hope I'll travel comfortably with the time, is to turn to the particular findings that we have identified in our written submissions and I want to take you through each of those findings that we've proposed, identify the response made by Sunnyfield and make some observations about how Commissioners you might deal with Sunnyfield's response and in the case of the Ombudsman, the Ombudsman's response. In addition to identifying the findings, Commissioners, we also identified in our written submissions some recommendations and in that regard, Sunnyfield appears to accept the bulk of the recommendations and I'll speak briefly to that at the end of these submissions. So may I start with the findings? Now, if it helps Commissioners, I think Law and Order, who assists us with the conduct of the hearing and the technology, may be able to put up on the screen the proposed finding and that might in terms be a little bit of a shorthand in terms of reading the findings. So first is finding one. This deals with a factual matter and the proposed finding, Commissioners, which you'll see on the screen, is that there was no good reason for Sunnyfield to delay notifying Eliza for at least four months of its intention to evict Melissa or for Sunnyfield having failed to discuss alternative options with Eliza prior to issuing the eviction notice. We submit that a finding that is open to you commissioners is that Sunnyfield's delay was deliberate and designed to protect Sunnyfield's interests and reputation over Melissa's wellbeing and best interests. Sunnyfield has addressed this issue in its submissions at paragraph 74 and following. It rejects the contention that Sunnyfield was seeking some benefit for itself in delaying the termination notice. It says there was no benefit to Sunnyfield. The submissions make a contention that some of our submissions may be inconsistent with also identifying that Sunnyfield sought to terminate Melissa's residency because there was a short window of opportunity before the NDIS became operational. Commissioners, it's fair to read our submissions in their full context. Sunnyfield says that what you should find is that the actual reason for delaying issuing the termination notice was that Sunnyfield was waiting until the Ombudsman had finalised its report into a reportable incident that had been notified in mid-December 2017. So it suggests that any delay being deliberate was without foundation. Commissioners, one may look at the Sunnyfield submissions and see that deliberate is intended to be pejorative. We don't think that that finding is appropriate. It's clear that the decision was deliberate. It was deliberate in the sense that Sunnyfield identifies that they are waiting for the Ombudsman's report. So clearly there was a sense of deliberateness. The issue might be the reason and there is dispute in relation to the reason for that. So what is not disputed however in Sunnyfield's response is that Sunnyfield did not discuss alternative options in the month that it delayed in implementing the decision. And when one looks at paragraph 77 of Sunnyfield's submissions and the factors in favour of terminating Eliza's residency, sorry, Melissa's residency, it is fair to say that those points are not consistent with putting Melissa's interests at the forefront. Indeed, looking at all of those factors, there was no waiting against interests of Sunnyfield or Melissa and indeed you can make a finding, there was no real consideration of Melissa's interests at all. The second finding is related to that. The second finding is that Sunnyfield failed to properly consider the impact of its decision to terminate services to Melissa and the impact that would have on her and her family.
Can we just bring that up on the screen so people can follow that?
This is number two.
Thank you.
In its submissions, Commissioners, at paragraph 85 and 86, Sunnyfield says it would never have left Melissa without accommodation and supports. And it says that's evidenced by the fact that Melissa is currently residing with Sunnyfield. However, Sunnyfield accepts that the processes of issuing termination notices certainly could have been handled better. But it submits that none of the adverse findings proposed should be made. In our respectful submission, Sunnyfield's assertion that it would never have left Melissa without accommodation or support is entirely inconsistent with the evidence presented to the Royal Commission. Even at the hearing, Ms. Cutterhey would not expressly clarify Sunnyfield's position as to whether or not the eviction notice was withdrawn or would be drawn. It seems only in the course of the preparation of Sunnyfield's submissions in relation to this matter that it's provided some certainty in terms of the eviction notice and confirms that it would be withdrawn. Sunnyfield accepts that the issuing could have been handled better or differently. And on that basis alone, it's open to you Commissioners to make the findings sought in Council Assisting submissions. Can I next turn to the findings that concern particular themes? And Commissioners, I identified the eight particular themes earlier. The first theme is the theme of governance and leadership. And these are addressed in our written submissions at page 60, paragraph 228 and following. The third finding, if that can come up, was that the absence of a person or persons with disability on the Sunnyfield board at the time of the public hearing failed to ensure people with disability were appropriately represented and involved in decision-making. This posed a risk that the direct and lived experience of people with disability were not represented on the board. May I say, Sunnyfield's response to this contention is surprising. Sunnyfield's submissions appear at paragraph 33 through to 36. In summary, Sunnyfield says that until law reform finds its way into the provisions of the Corporations Act or other legislation, legal obstacles remain for the employment of persons with intellectual disability to corporate roles. Without such reform, other obstacles are likely to exist. Sunnyfield does say, paragraph 36, that it is supportive of legislative reform directed towards providing greater representation of people with disability, both within and outside the disability services sector. With respect to Sunnyfield, it has not engaged with the proposed finding number three. We have carefully looked at the Corporations Law. There are four references to disability in the Corporations Law. None of them concern the role of directors. Section 1.5.5 of the Corporations Law sets out the qualifications or the requirements of a director. Disability does not disqualify a person for being a director. Disability does not mean just intellectual disability. There are many Australian directors who have disability who are able to perform their duties and the important director's duties competently, effectively, but also to give a perspective of lived and direct experience of people with disability. The note that we identified in our written submission, and that is, nothing about us, without us, is important. It is not satisfactory in our respectful submission that the rights and interests of people with disability are talked about by people without disability. I know Commissioner Galbally has some questions that she wishes to raise in relation to these matters. But Sunnyfield has not addressed the fact that there may be many people with disability who would be excellent directors and could assist on questions of governance. Commissioners, you should reject the submission that people with disability need to wait until law reform to the Corporations Act or other legislation will be a means of opening the door to take on leadership roles.
Ms. Eastman, the submissions of Sunnyfield appear to be directed primarily to what I take it to be their contention, that a person with intellectual disability is incapable of serving as a director of a corporation, including a non-profit corporation with charitable status. Do you accept that?
No, I do not accept that. My submission is that that makes a very high and generalised assumption about people with intellectual disability. It also fails to understand the supports that can be provided to people with intellectual disability in terms of supported decision-making. We were not suggesting that the board be comprised entirely of people with intellectual disability who received services from Sunnyfield. That was not the submission, and that's not what we have put in Council Assisting submission. But people with intellectual disability sufficiently supported should not be precluded from consideration for leadership and director's roles. Those are our submissions. Our fourth finding, which can come up, I think, was that the composition of the Sunnyfield board at the time of the public hearing was weighted towards those with financial or commercial experience, rather than people with direct experience of providing support services to people with disability. At paragraph 38, Sunnyfield says that no such adverse finding should be made. And it is entirely appropriate to have qualified and experienced directors on the board of Sunnyfield. In that respect, we agree. It is entirely appropriate for Sunnyfield to have directors on its board who are qualified and experienced. Sunnyfield's submission says that it is required through its board to manage substantial amounts of money for the benefit of people with disability. Further, its property portfolio is critical to the aspect of service delivery. And if the board did not include appropriate volunteer directors to oversee the financial management of Sunnyfield, it would put at risk the viability of the organisation itself. At paragraph 44, Sunnyfield submits that it will be unnecessary and unhelpful to make the findings sought with respect to the levels of representation of people with disability within the corporate structure of Sunnyfield. In our respectful submission, in understanding and looking fairly and appropriately at what qualified and experienced directors should be on a board such as Sunnyfield, to suggest that the only consideration is the management of financial amounts of money with the implicit assumption that people with disability are not capable of doing so should be firmly and roundly rejected, Commissioners. It is a submission that displays ableism, perhaps conscious bias rather than unconscious bias. In our respectful submission, there is nothing to support the suggestion that the inclusion of people with disability would put at risk the financial viability of the organisation. The next finding, number five, is that there was no operational system at the time of the public hearing for board directors to make regular visits to Sunnyfield, shared independent living houses, nor to hold meetings with residents of those houses, their families or supporters. And Commissioners, you'll recall the evidence and the questions that I asked Ms. Cutterhey about these matters. At paragraph 46, Sunnyfield says these criticisms are unwarranted. At paragraph 48, it says it may be undesirable for board members to pay regular visits to shared living accommodation. That accommodation is someone's home. We agree it is someone's home. We also agree, as submitted, that the privacy and dignity of that home should be respected. We agree with that. However, we do not see that visits from board directors to the houses where services are provided is inconsistent with paying respect to somebody's home or the privacy and dignity of that home.
Well, I suppose, Ms. Eastman, like anybody else's home, people can invite others into their home.
We agree. There is also a contention put that the board's function is not one of management. We agree with that as well. But the submission made by Sunnyfield about the importance of qualified and experienced directors and directors who can properly discharge their function would necessarily mean that those directors have direct knowledge of the very services and the homes over which they have responsibility. To suggest that the directors should not discharge that function because the accommodation is someone's home is straw man reasoning and should be rejected. We have not suggested in our written submissions that the directors are visiting the homes on a daily, weekly or monthly basis. Our point was a simple one, and that was that there was no operational system at the time of the public hearing for making regular visits. We do accept the observation made in the submissions that at the time of the hearing, the board and Sunnyfield were dealing with issues concerning the impact of COVID-19 on visits to the home. But perhaps with modern technologies, that may have given Sunnyfield a range of options to look at having a system in place to make regular visits to the homes. But also importantly, which seems to have been overlooked in the submissions, to hold meetings with the residents of those houses, their families or supporters.
Ms. Eastman, this is a corporation, a non-profit. But in terms of discharging responsibility, is it not the case that directors of any entity, whether for-profit or non-profit, need to understand the nature of the undertaking, the challenges, in order to discharge fully the range of responsibilities that directors have? Whether you're a director of a company running a casino or whether you're a non-profit running a very large number of places of accommodation for people with disability, it's part, is it not, of a director's function to understand how the services are delivered, what problems there may be, and what needs to be investigated, if anything, in order to ensure that all is well as far as the discharge of corporate responsibilities is concerned?
Yes, Chair, we didn't put evidence on in this particular hearing about the specific roles of directors and the large texts and advices and newsletters and guidelines produced by organisations such as the Institute of Company Directors. But clearly, being a director imposes particular responsibilities. But the responsibilities have to be across the nature of the organisation for which you have responsibility. And that doesn't matter what the nature of the organisation is. So I accept Sunnyfield will see that that contention that we're seeking by way of finding seems to be harsh. But I think it is impressing that particularly when we're looking at measures and systems to eliminate violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation, and where circumstances make people with disability vulnerable, particularly people living in segregated settings who do not have extensive community safeguards around them, that it perhaps places an extra and additional obligation or duty on directors of disability service providers. We talked about the importance of eyes and ears. And the directors can play a very important role in being both the eyes and the ears of the organisation. The sixth finding was the absence of a person with disability on the senior leadership team. And we said that fails to ensure that people with disability were and are appropriately represented and involved in decision-making that directly affects their lives. At paragraph 44, Sunnyfield responded in its submissions to say it is unnecessary and unhelpful about making findings sought with respect to the levels of representation of persons with disability within the corporate structure of Sunnyfield. And Commissioners, I understand you may have a question of Mr. Duggan in relation to why the submission is expressed as both unnecessary and unhelpful. However, Sunnyfield has pointed out, and we certainly acknowledge that Ms. Cutterhey herself has experience of disability. And we don't shy away from that. Next finding also relates to visits, but this time of the members of the senior leadership teams, is here, finding number seven. I've put the finding up there. The contentions from Sunnyfield are the same contentions raised in relation to board members paying regular visits. And so my response to that submission reflects the response earlier in terms of eyes or ears. The next theme and the next set of findings concern the theme of choice and control. And Commissioners, we've addressed this in our written submissions at page 68 and following, paragraph 266 and following. We've suggested a finding that's open to the Royal Commissioners was that Melissa was not afforded choice and control with respect to the service and residency agreements in April 2017. You'll remember the evidence was that when Sunnyfield took over the operation of the Western Sydney House, there was a very short period of time. There was significant rush, I think, for everybody involved, including Sunnyfield. You'll recall that the evidence was that Melissa, with the assistance of Eliza, was required to enter into both a service agreement and a residency agreement. And Commissioners, you'll remember at the hearing, we took Ms. Cutterhey to those documents and asked her some questions about it. The issue of choice and control in this respect was the issue, in effect, to be able to negotiate the terms and conditions of agreements such as service agreements and residency agreements. You recall the evidence at the time through emails was that these were standard form legal documents, and so they couldn't be changed. So that's the context to which we sought the finding that Melissa was not afforded choice and control with respect to residency and service agreements. Sunnyfield has addressed this at paragraph 51 and 132 of its written submissions. Says at paragraph 51, in respect to the question of choice and control, it appears that at some moments in time, at least the relationship between Sunnyfield and Eliza was such that both parties wanted to end the arrangement so long as a suitable alternative provider could be found for Melissa. I'm not sure that that's directly referable to the finding that's sought. But at paragraph 132, Sunnyfield says it is accepted that Melissa's ability to negotiate the terms of Sunnyfield's standard support agreement was limited. So there does appear to be some concession. I note in this respect that the Commonwealth submissions also address the issue of choice and control in terms of the extent to which the concept of choice and control may be limited when it comes to what the service provider will in fact offer. Mr. Dighton may wish to address you on this aspect of the Commonwealth submissions. If I understand those submissions correctly, the tenor was that if the service provider does not offer a particular service or set out the way in which that service might be provided, then that may inherently limit the concept of choice and control. And that there may have been some implications of this in terms of the findings that the Royal Commission might make in relation to Melissa's residency and services agreement.
Can you give us a paragraph reference to the Commonwealth submissions that you're referring to?
So this is page three of the Commonwealth submissions, under Part D. And you'll see it starts at paragraph seven. And you'll see at paragraph 10, the Commonwealth says, "The Australian Government notes that the inability or unwillingness of a particular provider to provide supports or services to a participant, either at all or on terms that are acceptable to the participant, does not constitute a denial of choice and control to that participant within the meaning of choice or control in the NDIS."
Yes, I think there's a question as to what paragraph 10 is intended to convey.
Yes, so that's why I draw, Commissioners, your attention to this issue. I accept that the Commonwealth has provided very concise submissions. And I accept that no adverse findings have been sought with respect to the Commonwealth. But I did find that paragraph to be somewhat cryptic. So maybe Mr. Dighton can assist you further on that matter. Next finding, number nine, concerns Sunnyfield's decision in January 2018 to terminate its residency.
I'm sorry, just before you leave, eight. Am I correct in my recollection that the New South Wales Ombudsman... that the New South Wales Ombudsman addressed that question and did find that uh there had been in effect a denial of choice and control as far as the original agreement was concerned?
Um I I'll have to check to make sure that I can describe that in the precise terms.
Well, I'm sure the Ombudsman can help us with that. I I I anyway, I just would like to check that record.
Uh the ninth finding is Sunnyfield's decision in January twenty eighteen to terminate its residency and services agreements with Melissa was inconsistent with the principle of choice and control, and Sunnyfield prioritised its interests over Melissa's right to a safe and secure home. This finding relates to the earlier findings that I've touched on in terms of the circumstances of delay in relation to issuing notice. Uh Sunnyfield says as part of its overarching response at paragraph five of its submissions, that any suggestion that Sunnyfield prefers its reputation over the people to whom it provides services should be rejected. Does uh seem to address the aspects of this finding at paragraph fifty-one by reference to the fact that the relationship had broken down between Eliza and Sunnyfield. And it summarises its position at paragraph ninety-two as follows. It would be open for this Royal Commission to provide recommendations as to the circumstances in which a service provider would be entitled to bring about an end to the provision of services to a person with disability. Such recommendations could probably consider whether this would include a situation where there has been a total breakdown of trust and communication between the service provider and the person with disability or their family and guardian. Commissioners, it will ultimately be up to you as to whether or not it's appropriate for this Royal Commission to make recommendations of the kind or touching on the matters identified in paragraph ninety-two of Sunnyfield's submissions. May we say in response to this contention, with respect, Sunnyfield continues to fail to separate its duty to and agreement with Melissa from the breakdown of its relationship with Eliza. The fact that things were difficult with Eliza from Sunnyfield's um perception does not mean that it absolves its obligations in terms of the residency and services agreements to Melissa. The next finding is a more general finding, part in number ten, and that is the resident's ability to exercise choice and control was limited as a consequence of Sunnyfield both being a provider of rental accommodation and a provider of disability support services. At paragraph one hundred and thirty-three, I understand Sunnyfield's response is that with respect to the landlord being the provider of services, Ms Cudahy agreed that those two things do not, quote, travel together. And she said that, quote, you certainly could have a separate provider who provides the accommodation. Uh I know Commissioner Galbely wants to ask Mr Duggan some questions about this issue later. But in our respectful submission, uh Sunnyfield has not substantially addressed the uh risk of conflict or the inherent um difficulty with the proposition about being both the provider of rental accommodation and also the provider of disability support services. Commissioners, this is going to be a matter which cannot be finally resolved in the context of this particular hearing. It's a significant matter, and it's a matter that the Royal Commissioners will need to carefully consider and perhaps address in the context of future hearing and the broader ongoing work of the Royal Commission. Can I turn then to the next theme, which is of preventing and responding to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation? We uh have addressed these issues and themes at paragraph two hundred and ninety-seven, at paragraph seventy-seven and following. And we make a proposal for a number of findings in, one finding uh in this regard. It's finding eleven. And that is that Sunnyfield's specific policies and processes for preventing and responding to violent abuse and neglect of people with disability failed to prevent the abuse of Melissa Carl Chen by two of its staff, SP one and SP two. Commissioners, this is probably the most serious and um perhaps the most adverse of the adverse findings that we propose. We have very um clearly identified that the finding that we think is open is directed to policies and processes. In that regard, Sunnyfield has responded at paragraph seventy-two B of its submissions. It says, the suggestion that it was the policies and processes of Sunnyfield which failed to protect the abuse of Melissa, Carl and Chen must be rejected. Whilst Sunnyfield does not seek any finding itself as to the matters of causation, any causative finding which the Royal Commission does make must be considered in light of the Ombudsman's conduct, and I'll come to that in a moment. At paragraph ninety-three, Sunnyfield says this. As a matter of fair logic, it is difficult to resist the proposition that the policies and procedures which were in place did not prevent the abuse perpetrated against Melissa, Carl and Chen. However, it is a more taxing exercise to draft a policy or procedure which would have been fail-safe in preventing the abuse that occurred. Like a government's attempt to achieve low crime rates, zero tolerance does not of itself equate to a complete eradication of crime. Similarly, it must be assumed that the risk of people like SP one and SP two seeking employment in the disability sector will never be eradicated completely. May I say, we found this response quite extraordinary. When we identified specific policies and processes for the purpose of this finding, we were not suggesting that the mere drafting of a policy or a process would be uh the answer. Policies and processes do several things. First of all, they clearly set the values and expectations of an organisation for itself, for its staff, for its consumers, and what it seeks to achieve. The policies and processes can identify who bears responsibility to ensure, in this case, a safe living environment. It's flippant with respect to suggest that the mere drafting of the policy wouldn't have prevented abuse. And to make an analogy that the government's attempt to achieve low crime rate by using the expression zero tolerance doesn't mean a complete eradication of crime. Commissioners, you should be concerned if, and I'll give Mr Duggan the opportunity to respond to this, that what has been suggested here by Sunnyfield is that incidents of violence, abuse or neglect of people with disability who live in circumstances such as that provided by Sunnyfield and perhaps even other service providers mean that it may be inevitable that crime or violence will occur. I'm not suggesting from a Pollyanna perspective that a policy or practice will prevent violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation. But unless those policies are met by a commitment to changing cultures and to ensure that practices accordance, in accordance with the policies are there to prevent violence, abuse, neglect, then of course, nothing will happen. So in our respectful submission, you should reject the submissions made by Sunnyfield in this regard. And uh I'll also address in the moment the extent to which the Ombudsman should also be accountable uh in the manner Sunnyfield suggests.
Uh Ms Eastman, I I rather took Sunnyfield, um Mr Duggan to be saying uh that when you read proposed finding eleven literally, and there is a certain literalness in Sunnyfield's responses, I must say, uh it's self-evident, because of course the specific policies and processes for preventing and responding to violence and so forth did fail to prevent the abuse of Melissa, Carl and Chen, and it's self-evident. Um the issue, I think, is whether the policy, in what respect were the policies and processes deficient so as to allow that to occur? Now, I know you've addressed that in the written submissions, but perhaps you might just say something about that. I think that the Sunnyfield's response was in part based upon this reading of the import of finding eleven.
Oh, I'm happy to address that, Chair. Um the deficiencies can be viewed in a number of different ways. The first is to ask whether there is a deficiency in the written version of a policy, and that is to identify whether there are elements that are missing. We did not undertake the approach in this hearing to see ourselves as auditing Sunnyfield's policies to identify what should or should not have been in those policies. The deficiencies really came to what the way in which those policies operated in practice. Now, that depends on a number of factors. One, there's that broader institutional responsibility for how policies are implemented. The research tells us that the importance of leadership in ensuring that policies and policy settings in organisations are led from the top, that the messages in policies are reinforced by the leaders. In this case, the absence of the board being actively involved in these matters that we could see on the documents available, and I accept, and I am not making a criticism of the board across the the whole of the operations of Sunnyfield, but limited to this particular case, illustrated a very significant disconnect between what happened in the house and the reporting made by SP one in relation to the events in the house through the management systems of the policy provided up to levels where people who should have been making decisions in relation to protecting people against violence, abuse and neglect did not occur. So the deficiency was not so much in the wording of the policies, but the deficiency was in the processes that enabled those policies to work effectively and to ensure that the safeguards were built into those policies. We didn't look in detail, but you have the evidence in the written form about the uh response team and the way in which the response team should address issues. Uh clearly, there is a capacity in the way in which Sunnyfield has processes and policies to be able to address these issues, but something was deficient and the deficiency seemed to be processes rather than the strict written word.
So would it be perhaps um more complete if finding eleven that you proposed was to the following effect? Sunnyfield's specific policies and processes for preventing and responding to violence and so forth um should have been implemented in a manner that prevented the abuse, but was not implemented in that matter and hence the abuse occurred?
Yes, that may that may be a finding. As I, as I have said, these are findings proposed by council assisting, and it it's ultimately a matter for the Commissioners to make.
I understand that, but that that formulation would perhaps remove the issue of interpretation of the proposed finding eleven.
Madam, thank you, Chair. So the, coming back to the next issue, which is the next theme of complaints and feedback systems. We've addressed this at paragraph eighty-three of our submissions, at paragraph three hundred and twenty and following. Paragraph twelve uh suggests a finding open to the Commissioners is the manner in which informal concerns or feedback from families about the house, about how the house, sorry, I'll start again. The manner in which informal concerns or feedback from families about the house were dealt with contributed to a feeling of distrust and anxiety on their part through to at least July twenty nineteen. Now, I accept this is a difficult finding for Sunnyfield to respond to in this form. Uh because what we've identified as the adverse finding is about the manner in which the informal concerns or feedback were dealt with. And our findings suggest that that manner contributed to a feeling of distrust anxiety. The distrust and anxiety, we say, is is certainly a finding open to the Commissioners, having heard the evidence of Eliza and Sophia, and also the written material that you have. A question about the manner is linked in some part to the questions that you've asked me earlier about policies and procedures, and this process is really where the the manner, I think, uh becomes uh clear. Uh may I say, and Mr Duggan will address this, that uh I struggled to understand Sunnyfield's response to this contention. Its submissions at paragraph one hundred and thirty-six through to one hundred and thirty-eight uh address this issue. At paragraph one hundred and thirty-six, it points to a period between April twenty seventeen and December twenty nineteen and says Sunnyfield received over one thousand five hundred emails from Melissa's guardian, which necessitated a response. That response necessitated internal work to provide answers to the issues raised. It is, and it says, it is evident that the administrative burden which that correspondence generated caused a high level of stress to Sunnyfield's staff. Causing there, my respectful submission, one only needs to read paragraph one hundred and thirty-six to say that finding is open. The fact that Sunnyfield received one thousand five hundred, over one thousand five hundred emails from Melissa's guardian is probably the surest sign that the manner in which informal concerns and feedback wasn't working. And uh while the distress and distrust came from the families, it's also clear that the manner has also contributed to stress on the part of Sunnyfield's staff. But at paragraph one hundred and thirty-seven, Sunnyfield says, notwithstanding the relationship broken down, had broken down, Sunnyfield does not accept there is a causal relationship between that strained relationship and a failure to appreciate SP one's abuse and exploitation of the residents in the house. And at paragraph one hundred and thirty-eight, it says it's not necessary to make findings as we have recommended that the matters are highly specific and do not assist in addressing the systemic issues. In our respectful submission, Sunnyfield has not really addressed the gravamen of the proposed finding that's made. If Sunnyfield is continuing to suggest that somehow Eliza's conduct was unreasonable or that she was the cause of the issue, then there remains that lack of insight in our respectful submission as to uh the way in which Sunnyfield, as the provider of the services, should have uh carefully addressed and considered the way in which it dealt with the informal concerns or feedback from family and in particular, Eliza.
The fact that there were fifteen hundred emails may have had something to do with the fact that there was something very wrong.
That's, that's precisely my suspicion.
There's no dispute that there was something very wrong at this uh place of residence, uh and uh subject to what Mr Duggan might say, it's very difficult to understand anything that happened during this period without the context of, yes, something had gone really wrong.
Uh finding thirteen is related to this issue, and finding thirteen is that from May twenty seventeen, Sunnyfield inappropriately took a defensive stance towards the complaints or concerns raised by Eliza and external clinicians supporting Melissa, and adopted a protectionist approach towards its staff. This protectionist approach contributed to its failure to recognise red flags in relation to the conduct of SP one and the situation in the house. So the matter set out at paragraph one hundred and thirty-eight of Sunnyfield's submission also addressed this. And uh it said that to make adverse findings on both finding twelve and thirteen would necessitate due consideration of the issues raised and responses to and the issues raised in, as I read it, each of the one thousand five hundred or so emails, and that task was beyond the inquiry. Um in our respectful submission, uh Sunnyfield's submission should be rejected and the finding is open. Then finding fourteen is, we have said it's open to the Royal Commission to make this finding that labelling complainants as unreasonable, difficult or querulent negatively influences how staff might perceive them and deal with their complaints. And do you recall the uh investigation undertaken by Jenny Piod in terms of um a series of matters also looking at these issues? Um as we read Sunnyfield's submissions, and I welcome Mr Duggan's um clarification on this, we have not seen any uh specific response to proposed finding fourteen, other than the extent to which it's addressed in the response to proposed findings twelve and thirteen. And in our submission, we say that the finding is open. Commissioners, can I now move to the theme of staff recruitment, supervision and complaints and the culture at the house? It starts at paragraph three hundred and forty-nine of the submissions, at paragraph eighty-nine and following. Uh finding fifteen. Finding fifteen is not a finding that is specifically addressed to Sunnyfield. Finding fifteen, we submit, it's open to the Royal Commissioners to find that SP1's failure to provide his complete work history, along with not being asked to explain gaps in his CV when he was recruited by Sunnyfield, impaired Sunnyfield from conducting thorough pre-employment checks and screening. Now, at paragraph one hundred and eight, Sunnyfield has said that proposed finding fifteen is not in its terms adverse to Sunnyfield. And none of the proposed adverse findings are critical of Sunnyfield's recruitment processes. So that's correct, we agree with that. Sunnyfield says it is not appropriate that no adverse findings have been sought in relation to Sunnyfield's recruitment processes, and we're not seeking any adverse findings in that regard. In the circumstances, commissioners, we submit that it is open to make that finding, and we accept that that's an adverse finding in relation to SP1. Finding sixteen, we say it's open to the commissioners that during SP1's employment at the House, Sunnyfield did not have appropriately robust systems in place to supervise SP1 and to prevent him from intimidating other staff, enabling a toxic workplace culture to pervade the House. And Sunnyfield managers were deceived by SP1, and they did not act on several red flags which should have resulted in a greater scrutiny of his conduct at an earlier stage. Paragraph seventy-three C, Sunnyfield says in its submissions it would be unfair to make such a finding in circumstances in which critical information about SP1 was withheld from Sunnyfield by more than one government agency. That says, for the same reason, it would be unfair to propose adverse findings in, which I might deal with those later, adverse findings. I think we understand this contention to be Sunnyfield shifting the adverse finding on the basis that it did not know what the Ombudsman knew. And if the Ombudsman had disclosed the information to Sunnyfield, Sunnyfield wouldn't have employed SP1 and therefore all of these things would not occur. The difficulty in our respectful submission for Sunnyfield is it did employ SP1 and that SP1's conduct was obvious in our respectful submission. And what was missing was that level of supervision to either address his conduct or to manage the situation appropriately.
The fundamental issue, I think, that Mr Duggan has drawn attention to is that of causation. You can't sit on cases in the New South Wales Court of Appeal for a decade or so without coming to grips with the concept of causation in many different areas. What I think Mr Duggan, I want to draw this to his attention so that perhaps he can think about it between now and the time he makes his submissions. The issue that arises is there can be concurrent causes of any event. That is why in so many areas of the law, trade practices law, as it was once called, the law relating to negligence and causation, there can be more than one cause of something happening. There can be two causes. If one had not taken place, then maybe the event wouldn't have occurred. But also, it may be true of the other, that if that event hadn't occurred or that causation didn't exist, then the event wouldn't have occurred either. So I think Mr Duggan may have to address that what seems to be an assumption underlying many of the submissions, that there can only be one cause of something that has gone wrong. It's very common experience that there are multiple causes of something going wrong, each of which may have been sufficient in itself to result in the harm that has taken place.
Might be convenient at this point, given the issues raised, is to deal with the one finding the council assisting has sought in relation to the New South Wales Ombudsman. This is proposed finding twenty-five, I'm sorry to Law and Order to jump down to the end. And we've addressed the finding in relation to the Ombudsman at page one hundred and six of our written submissions, paragraph four hundred and seventeen and follows. And the proposed finding is a short finding. That is that the New South Wales Ombudsman should have disclosed to Sunnyfield the information gathered about SP1. The Ombudsman's submissions address this issue at paragraphs forty to fifty-six. Commissioners, I know you've read the lengthy response. But perhaps the position can be summarised in the matter set out at paragraph fifty-three, where the Ombudsman says, it's not surprising that the decision was ultimately made not to send the information to Sunnyfield. The test, which requires the Ombudsman to believe on reasonable grounds that there is a risk of harm, was clearly not met. Dated unsubstantiated dismissed misconduct allegations could not, in the circumstances, have led to a quote rational bearing on the formation of a reasonable belief that there was a risk of harm and could not be considered, quote, sufficient to induce in the mind of the reasonable person the necessary reasonable belief. Paragraph fifty-seven, the Ombudsman says in conclusion, we note that there is no criticism of the handling of the various complaints by way of the Ombudsman's office's communication with the complainant or the protected attempts to engage in conciliation with Eliza and Sunnyfield, and that should be reflected in the final report. We acknowledge paragraph fifty-seven, but the issue in relation to this finding is whether the Ombudsman should have disclosed. Commissioners, the Ombudsman is saying to you, as we understand the submission, that there was no obligation or requirement to disclose anything to Sunnyfield unless there were reasonable grounds that there was a risk of harm. You have in the evidence some material from the Ombudsman, including a notation from the Ombudsman's office that an investigation in two thousand and five in relation to SP1 lacked rigor. I don't take that matter much further, but you may be assisted by Miss Finesse in terms of the extent to which dated unsubstantiated dismissed misconduct allegations could not, in the circumstances, have had a rational bearing on the formation of a reasonable belief. I accept, and the submission may be made, that with the benefit of hindsight, one cannot reverse engineer these matters. But it may assist you, commissioners, to understand what would he have taken? What else would have been required in these circumstances for the Ombudsman to believe on reasonable grounds that there was a risk of harm? So that's proposed finding twenty-five. But I'll come back to finding seventeen. And this finding reflects, for the most part, matters that I've already touched on. But this finding is that there was a lack of appropriate systems resulted in senior managers failing to receive reliable reports and accurate information about what was happening at the House. For two years, Sunnyfield managers accepted what was reported through SP1 about the situation at the House. And their reliance, that's the managers, on SP1 influenced the negative perception of Eliza. At paragraph one hundred and sixteen, Sunnyfield responds to these matters and says that there are a number of reasons why SP1 and SP2's misconduct in the House went undetected. And commissioners, I won't read them all out now, I'm just conscious of the time. I accept that there are a range of matters that would be taken into account in terms of why SP1 and SP2's misconduct went undetected. But to blame those who were subjected to intimidation of not being prepared to report itself highlights the issue that if there is a fear in reporting matters of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation, then to blame those who were too scared to come forward really highlights a deficiency in systems and processes. The next theme that we identified was the theme of risk management. And we've addressed this in our written submissions at paragraph three hundred and seventy-four, page ninety-five and following. Proposed finding eighteen is that Sunnyfield's approach to risk management is from the perspective of the impact of risk on the organisation itself, and it is not person centred or focused on the interests of people with disability receiving services. Sunnyfield says at paragraph one hundred and twenty-three of its submission that this proposed finding is with respect to risk management is misconceived and does not reflect the way in which Sunnyfield operates. And the submissions go on to address the relevant policy documents and also at paragraph one hundred and twenty-four, to talk about what the nature of risk means. The submissions say that risk as an expression is an ambulatory term, and in the context of a disability service provider, risk management may refer to, for example, financial compliance, regulatory compliance or occupational health and safety. It could also refer to the risk of violence, abuse, neglect of people with disability. And it says, it does not follow from the fact that policies exist in relation to financial, regulatory, workplace risks, that such corporate and operational risks are prioritised over the safety and wellbeing of clients at the service provider. With respect, that was not what our submission was. We were looking at the approach to risk management in the context of managing risk in circumstances that would lead to the risk of violence, abuse and neglect within the delivery of the particular services by reference to the evidence in relation to the Western Sydney House. Commissioners, you have in the material, and we can take you further to this, and I think the submissions cover it, the various risk management frameworks and policies and documents. But it's clear in our respectful submission that where documents are drafted to be policies that seek to minimise liability for an organisation, inherently those policies are drafted from the perspective of ensuring compliance and minimising risk for an organisation. There are opportunities to learn from the issues raised in this case study about integrating an approach to managing risk together with those important risk areas of financial compliance, work health and safety and the like. Related to that finding, finding nineteen proposed that Sunnyfield has a low tolerance for reputational risk, and reputation is listed as a potential impact in both its operational risk matrix and its corporate risk matrix. We are not saying that it's a situation where an organisation would not be concerned about its reputation. Reputations of individuals and corporations are very important. But the question is whether or not the concern about reputational risk overshadows risk and management of risk for people with disability from the risk of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. Sunnyfield has addressed these matters at paragraph one hundred and twenty-seven and one hundred and twenty-eight of its submissions. In our submission, we think the finding is certainly open based on the circumstances and the evidence that you heard in this case study. Paragraph, sorry, number twenty is also related both to the eviction issues which we've touched on earlier and the question of reputation. Proposed finding twenty is that the issuing of an eviction notice to Melissa on the fourth of June twenty eighteen was part of the management of perceived risk to Sunnyfield's reputation due to Melissa's sister, Eliza. This is addressed at paragraph seventy-seven and seventy-eight of Sunnyfield's submissions. Commissioners, you can read those matters. In our respectful submission, of all of the justifications proffered for Melissa's eviction, again, none of them focused on Melissa's needs and interests. And there was a distinct lack of open and transparent communication that one would expect to see if the eviction was no more than a reflection of the breakdown of a relationship. In our respectful submission, the available evidence allows you to make a finding that the perceived risk to Sunnyfield's reputation, particularly against the Ombudsman's inquiry, was a significant concern. The next theme we deal with is the theme of violence and abuse. This is page one hundred and four of the council assisting submissions, at paragraph four oh eight and following. Finding twenty-one is that Melissa, Carl and Chen were subject to violence and abuse at the House. The responsibility for that violence and abuse lies with SP1 and SP2. However, responsibility also lies with Sunnyfield, its board, its CEO and its senior leadership team. As I mentioned earlier, a finding of a similar form we've addressed earlier, but this is a particularly serious finding. However, Sunnyfield says at paragraph ninety-six that this proposed finding is far less benign than findings eleven and twenty-two. It says, if made, it would amount to a finding against particular individuals, including directors of the board, the CEO and the members of the senior leadership team. We accept that this is a significant finding. As council assisting, we have thought very carefully about the findings that we propose to the commissioners, and we accept the seriousness of it. But so too is the seriousness of the experience of Melissa, Carl and Chen, who, as Sunnyfield says, were in their own home. And in their own home, they were not protected with respect to their privacy or their dignity or their safety. So mindful of the particular circumstances and where the responsibility lies. Responsibility lies not only with individual perpetrators, but responsibility also lies with institutions. Those institutions may be large institutions like governments, they may be large corporations, they may be small organisations. But responsibility and accountability is essential if we are to address and understand violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation for people with disability. While I accept that this is a harsh finding that we invite the commissioners to make, in our respectful submission, that finding is open. I note, and I have carefully read Sunnyfield's submissions in relation to resort to standards of proof that are used in both civil and criminal proceedings. The Chair in particular will be mindful of many times that the Brigenture concept has been cited. We're very well aware of those matters and we've taken them into account. Notwithstanding that the finding is harsh, and we agree with that with respect to Sunnyfield, we do not agree that the finding is unnecessary. The next finding, number twenty-two, is Sunnyfield failed to create an environment where the residents of the House were safe and well supported. At paragraph ninety-five, Sunnyfield responds to this proposed finding, suggesting that the finding overlooks the contribution of the workers in the House other than SP1 and SP2, who support the residents in their daily lives and assist them with their favourite activities. Sunnyfield says that community support workers, key workers and senior support workers have genuine relationships with the residents, and the proposed adverse finding does not account for the efforts these workers and regional managers have made to assist the residents. And they note that Miss Peod confirmed the situation in the House dramatically improved following SP1's suspension or termination. We do not, as council assisting, overlook the contribution of the other workers. Indeed, we have noted the circumstances and the culture in the House that also silenced the workers. Our submission is directed to Sunnyfield rather than to any particular persons. And if, Commissioners, it requires some qualification in the proposed findings to make it clear that we are not seeking any adverse finding against any support worker other than SP1 or SP2 who supported the residents in their daily living, then we would certainly encourage the commissioners to think of a finding that made that abundantly clear. I'm almost there. Finding twenty-three is Sunnyfield's incident reporting systems failed and its managers failed to listen closely to, to value and respond appropriately to all feedback and concerns and complaints raised by the families. And they also failed actively to supervise SP1 to recognise and respond to the red flags relating to him and to ensure that staff underneath him and to ensure that staff underneath him were able to do their work and voice their concerns without fear or intimidation. So this this finding is very closely aligned to the findings that we've addressed earlier. But it's a finding obviously in the context of this particular theme. Sunnyfield has responded to this finding at paragraphs one hundred, one hundred and seventeen and it set out a number of steps that were taken by Sunnyfield to address these issues once they came to light. We do not make any criticism of the steps taken by Sunnyfield since the matters came to light and they are very helpfully set out at paragraph one hundred and seventeen. However, the question is what occurred in relation to the failure of the systems, particularly the reporting system that allowed the violence and abuse of the residents at the home. In our respect respectful submission, Sunnyfield has not addressed this issue and has not, in looking at what measures it's taken since those events, acknowledged or taken accountability for its own systemic defects. The final finding is number twenty-four. This is quite a narrow finding. But we've said that Sunnyfield should not have asserted legal professional privilege over any of Miss Peod's reports and those reports should have been provided in full to the N D I S Commission. Sunnyfield deals with this at paragraph one hundred and forty-two and one hundred and forty-three of its submissions. It suggests there's no basis for making an adverse finding of the form described in number twenty-four and suggests that there's no evidence to suggest that there was any attempt to restrict the flow of information flow to the N D I S. And nor is there any evidence that the N D I S regarded Sunnyfield's communications with it as deficient. I'm not sure it is for Sunnyfield to speak on behalf of the N D I S, but it does include a quotation from Commissioner Head's evidence. I think coming back to the core issue, it's this. The assertion of legal professional privilege is a concept known to the way in which the law operates. But if a legal practitioner is giving advice or there is the preparation of material in contemplation of litigation, then a prospective litigant should have the right called legal or client professional privilege to be able to disclose confidential and sometimes damaging material to their own lawyers for the purpose of receiving frank legal advice. It's another step to assert legal professional privilege to hide or keep things confidential that go to issues of accountability of the kind that we're dealing with in this case study. We've raised this as a matter of concern because if legal professional privilege can be used to hide or to keep matters confidential, that will be important to investigating, understanding and responding to violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation, then that may be a matter that the commissioners want to examine in further detail. So finally, I want to deal with recommendations. It may be unusual for commissioners to think of making recommendations prior to the conclusion of a final report. And the recommendations that we have identified for this particular hearing are recommendations that we thought we would advance somewhat tentatively to deal with the particular circumstances of this case study. But of course, the commissioners in the course of preparing your final report will think very carefully about particular recommendations that go beyond just what we have suggested, but more broadly looking at the totality of the work done by the Royal Commission. At paragraph five hundred and two of our submissions, we said that given this was the first time the Royal Commission through its public hearings had focused on disability service providers in this forensic style of hearing, that we didn't propose to make any recommendations about the provision of disability services more broadly. We did submit that there were a number of matters that should be the subject of further consideration and inquiry by the Royal Commission as part of its ongoing work relating to disability service providers. One of that was what an issue we raised as a theme is the potential use of C C T V in safeguarding measures in supported accommodations. This is a matter I expect Eliza's counsel may address you on. Sunnyfield has also addressed the issue of C C T V at paragraph one hundred and forty-five of its submissions and the Commonwealth at paragraph thirty-six to thirty-four. It's likely to be an ongoing issue where the use of C C T V as a safeguarding measure in supported accommodation has to look at a range of competing rights and responsibilities. We don't propose to make any findings to the commissioners on this issue or suggest any recommendations other than it should be a matter of further investigation by the commissioners. Then we've also suggested other areas for further work. One is the role of the N D I S Commission and other external regulators, or may I say oversight bodies, to oversee the conduct of disability service providers. And this includes such matters as the way in which investigations may be conducted and the way in which the N D I S Commission is able to actively monitor the investigations of allegations or complaints. The Commonwealth has touched briefly on this matter at paragraphs thirty to thirty-one. We've also raised as a matter for further consideration is the operation of a national worker screening check system, including the extent to which organisations will be able to access information about allegations of previous misconduct on the part of workers. And the Commonwealth has addressed this at paragraph thirty-three. We have also identified as an area for further work, the extent to which people with disability who have high support needs have appropriate choice and control over where they live, with whom they live and that they are not left vulnerable to violence and abuse as a result of homelessness. And commissioners, I understand this is a particular issue that you want to explore perhaps in the course of further hearings in the life of the Royal Commission. At paragraph five hundred and four of our submissions, we made some recommendations that the Royal Commission may wish to make with respect to Sunnyfield and its response specifically to violence and abuse that occurred at the home of Western Sydney. There were three particular matters. First, Sunnyfield should clarify in writing that the four June twenty eighteen eviction notice sent to Eliza has been withdrawn. Sunnyfield has addressed this in its written submissions at paragraph one hundred and fifty-three, noting that Sunnyfield has written to Eliza to confirm the exit notice was no longer current. The second was that Sunnyfield should engage in discussions with Eliza about revising its service agreements with her for Melissa and to ensure those agreements are consistent with Melissa's rights and her exercise of choice and control. And we've also suggested that Miss Cutterhey and appropriate members of the board should meet with Melissa, Carl, Chen or their families to provide an apology for Sunnyfield's failure to prevent the violence and abuse they endured and to discuss what redress and or additional supports or assistance they require. While I say that those recommendations are directed to Sunnyfield, they also in part are touching directly on the interests of the residents of the home and their family members. Sunnyfield has addressed in its written submissions at paragraph one hundred and forty-eight to one hundred and fifty-two the steps and measures that Sunnyfield has undertaken following the hearing to engage with Eliza, with Sophia and with the family members. Mister Duggan, no doubt, will wish to tell you what steps have been taken. Commissioners, I've gone a wee bit over the time proposed. Thank you for your indulgence in those of council assisting submissions.
Thank you very much, Miss Eastman. We'll now adjourn and resume at eleven thirty. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Mister O'Brien.
Thank you, Chair. By way of a very, very brief introduction, the witness Eliza is the sister and legal guardian of Melissa. Melissa is now twenty-four years of age and she, at the relevant time in this, in this, in this commission's inquiry and case study and until now lives and lived in the supported accommodation in Western Sydney provided by Sunnyfield. Eliza gave evidence before the Royal Commission at public hearing thirteen on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of May this year. And as council assisting has indicated, Eliza has made submissions to the Commission and agrees with and endorses all of the key themes, all of the proposed findings and the recommendations outlined by council assisting in her submissions. There are two additional matters that we encourage the Commission to consider. The first relates to a recommendation and this is set out in our submissions from paragraph eight through to nineteen. That is a recommendation that Sunnyfield should consider the use of C C T V as a safeguarding measure in the house with the wishes of Melissa, Carl and Chen and their families being central to this process. Council assisting at paragraph three hundred and ninety-eight has very helpfully and concisely set out the evidence from Eliza in relation to this point. The councillor assisting says in that paragraph that Eliza explained she has strong views about the need for C C T V footage, T Z T V to protect Melissa and the other residents of the house because they cannot speak for themselves in a way that could be, would be seriously taken seriously by a court or tribunal. She said Melissa had no voice and can't defend herself. And C C T V could provide a record of things that might, that might happen, which she could not speak about. She also said that it could provide a measure of protection to staff from false accusations of wrongdoing and could be used as a tool for learning about effective behaviour support strategies. When one considers that there were criminal procedures against S P one and S P two that failed and that was largely because of an absence of cooperative evidence as to the allegations made by police. When one considers what has now been told to this Royal Commission about what was happening within this house. We respectfully submit that in the balance, given what we now know has occurred and perhaps more importantly, what we don't know has taken place in the premises, that the recommendation that Sunnyfield should, and we're not suggesting they should do it as a matter of urgency or as a matter of, as a matter of implementing it straight away without considering all of those matters that councillor assisting has set out in particular paragraph four hundred and six and four hundred and seven of councillor assisting submissions. But rather that there should be a recommendation from the Commission so to steady Sunnyfield's resolve to begin a dialogue with the families of the residents of this house to consider the implementation of C C T V footage, the C C T V monitoring within the premises.
Mister O'Brien, are you submitting that this should be done only in relation to this particular house? And if that's right, why shouldn't it be extended more widely?
We are submitting that it, that it should happen in relation to this particular house because of the circumstances as they came to be brought light upon in this commission's inquiry. We don't say that it shouldn't be taken as a recommendation that would, would be appropriate for other residences. But that we say is not a matter for us to submit upon, but rather a matter for the Commission to deliberate upon. And we certainly don't suggest that it's not a good idea across the board. It certainly should be considered in all residences such as this where the residences are similar to Melissa, Carl and Chen especially. But in relation to this particular place where Melissa lives, we say that Sunnyfield should be given some impetus from a recommendation such as the one we formulated in our submissions that I've just mentioned.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioners, commissioners, we also say that there should be an additional adverse finding. And really this goes to the point that, that you made, Chair, related to those various and many possibilities as to causation. It was obviously, obviously the case that there were many red flags as council assisting has submitted that were missed by Sunnyfield. But we say that one of them related to a complaint made early in the piece, a concern raised early in the piece by Eliza to Sunnyfield related to concerns she had about the unauthorised restrictive practices by S P one at a previous place of employment. And we say that the Commission should consider this available adverse finding. Sunnyfield did not, did not appropriately act on Eliza's concern as to S P one's use of an unauthorised restrictive practice on a person with disability at a previous place of employment. Commissioners, at paragraph twenty-three through to twenty-nine of our submissions, we set out the circumstances in which Eliza spoke to Miss Cutterhey and Mister Swain in around October of two thousand and seventeen about concerns she had related to S P one and his use of unauthorised restrictive, restrictive practices at his previous employment. The relevant exhibits are exhibits thirteen dash three hundred and twenty-nine and thirteen dash three hundred and thirty. They, they are, they include an email from Eliza to Mister Jonathan Swain dated the twenty-seventh of October, two thousand and seventeen and notes of a conversation with and between Eliza and Mister Swain on that same date.
The first of those is a document, I think you referred to at note fourteen of your submissions. I wonder if that document can be brought up. Can you give the reference? I can't because I've managed to put a black biro mark through the reference.
The, the first exhibit was thirteen dash three two nine. That's it on the screen now.
Oh, we've got it. I'm sorry. I wasn't looking. Thank you.
So this is, the importance of this, Commissioners, is that it occurred quite early in the piece in, in contemplation of this commission of inquiries case study. This was a discussion between Eliza and Mister Swain back in October of two thousand and seventeen. And in, if we can go to the next exhibit, which is exhibit thirteen, three thirty. Now that, that's, if it can be expanded somewhat. We go to the, the second circle under the dot point Jonathan provided feedback. Is it the last one? That documents the concerns raised by Eliza at that time in that conversation related to the an incident with S P one restraining a client without consent. Eliza's notes indicate, indicated that Mister Swain had responded to the effect. And this is on the last circular dot point. If the screen can go down to that. When asked whether the previous provider had been contacted in relation to the incident with S P one restraining a client without consent against, and against management instruction, Jonathan, that's Mr Swain, said he couldn't access some information due to employees requiring written consent from S P one first. The importance of this is that there was no further, there's no further evidence nor any indication that this complaint was taken further nor seriously. It was a complaint of grave nature. And as time came, as we've come now to know with the efflection of time and the benefit of this inquiry, was of very significant import, given the timing of it and the, and the significance of what was being brought to the attention of Sunnyfield. And so we say that there was a failure to act appropriately on Eliza's concerns. And this put, this did put in the context of what we now know about S P one and his practices the residents of that house at risk. We say, Commissioners, respectfully, that the additional adverse finding can be made that Sunnyfield did not act appropriately on Eliza's concern as to S P one's use of an unauthorised restrictive practice on a person with disability at a previous place of employment. This dovetails neatly, we say, into the adverse findings number thirteen and sixteen, about which the commission has been referred by counsel assisting earlier on. We say that that is so because what this demonstrates, this interaction between Mr Swain from Sunnyfield and Eliza, is that Sunnyfield downplayed the seriousness of Eliza's complaints and concerns from a very early stage. It is a tangible example of how things brought to their attention were not addressed appropriately and how things may have been different, may have been different had these alerts been acted upon seriously and appropriately.
Mr O'Brien, does this submission go further than identifying another red flag? Ms Eastman has put as a submission that there were a number of red flags that sort of alerted Sunnyfield to major problems at this house. Is this just another red flag, or does your submission go further than that?
This is, this is certainly a red flag. But this submission goes further than that because of the timing of it, Chair. This submission is, underpins the proposition that from a very early stage, they didn't take Eliza's concerns and complaints seriously, notwithstanding the gravity of them. And, and secondly, because of the early nature of this complaint and the, again, the seriousness of it, 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 it is open for the commissioner to make, for the commission to make an additional finding of the type proposed because it was, because of its timing and because of its alarming, because of the alarming inaction that was taken in relation to it. The red flag recommendation is is also consistent with that. I mean, this is, this recommendation is consistent, this, sorry, adverse finding, I should say, is consistent with the findings proposed by counsel assisting in, in thirteen in relation to the protectionist approach towards its staff, that Sunnyfield evidently did have. And sixteen, related to the failure to have robust systems in place to supervise S P one and prevent him from intimidating other staff. Can I move, please, Commissioners, to the, some, several adverse findings and some of the submissions made by Sunnyfield?
Sorry, just before you proceed, Mr O'Brien, I'm looking at pages eighty-five to eighty-six of the transcript that are referred to in your submissions. And that is where Eliza gives evidence of these conversations and the notes that she made of those conversations. Was Eliza's evidence challenged by Sunnyfield?
It was not.
And was Ms Cuddey asked specifically about this?
I don't believe she was.
All right, thank you.
Turning to proposed adverse finding number one. And this relates.
Are you, are you going to be taking us through all twenty-odd proposed findings?
Not at all.
No, well, if, if you've got something very specific that you want to add to what Ms Eastman has put, specific and brief, yes, but we are pressed for time. And if it's in effect repeating what Ms Eastman has said, then that's unnecessary as far as the submissions are concerned.
Thank you, Chair. I don't intend to repeat Ms Eastman's submissions at all, except endorse them. And, and I only want to deal with four individual proposed adverse findings just in relation to how Sunnyfield has dealt with them, contrary to my clients' interests. Recommended, adverse finding number one relates to the delay in the notification to Eliza as to the decision to evict and terminate services and support. Sunnyfield says at paragraph seventy-seven that it was not motivated by reputational interests. And they then go on to assert in paragraph seventy-seven that, that, quote, "The discussed reasons for termination include the fact that Melissa's guardian lacked trust in Sunnyfield's staff, had unrealistic expectations of the level of service, wanted to manage the medical process outside Sunnyfield's processes, which created confusion, staff, staff stress and errors, and issued directions regarding CPR." This submission with respect is utterly without basis. First of all, Commissioners, none of that was put to Eliza, and it should have been put to Eliza if submissions were going to be made upon it at all. The submission in, in particular, that Eliza gave submissions, gave instructions in relation to the withholding of CPR in the event of a medical emergency is entirely wrong and presents a serious level of offence, a serious level of offence to Eliza. In any event, any issues involving Eliza and Sunnyfield related to the advanced care plan for Melissa were discussed and resolved prior to February two thousand and eighteen, the date of this briefing note referred to in paragraph seventy-seven, and prior to Sunnyfield notifying the ombudsman that they were going.
Do you mean February two thousand and nineteen?
February two thousand and eighteen.
Eighteen, paragraph seventy-seven, am I misreading something, says two thousand and nineteen?
I think that's a typo, Chair. That should be.
I'll substitute two thousand and eighteen.
I think that, I think you'll find Mr Doug has made an error there, simply a typo.
All right, thank you.
So, but the, the point being that those issues related to CPR were, had already been dealt with and finalised, and, and agreement had been reached between Sunnyfield and Eliza before the decision to terminate Eliza's support and eviction. Proposed adverse findings two, nine and twenty all go to the decision to evict Melissa and terminate support services. It said that Sunnyfield, that Sunnyfield says in their submissions to the effect that they've, they considered the interests of Melissa and her family in the decision to evict her. I want to take and endorse the comments by counsel assisting's submissions at paragraph eighty-one in relation to this. The notice of termination was clear and unambiguous. Melissa was required to leave with or without support, with or without housing, by five P M on the fifth of September two thousand and nineteen. Ms Love's letter is described in, and summarised in paragraph eighty-one of counsel assisting's submissions could not have been clearer. And in addition to that, Sunnyfield, of course, had four months to reconsider that decision before notifying Eliza of the decision to evict and terminate services. In that time, there was no inquiries made in our respectful submission as to the best interests of Melissa. And there was no proper effort, appropriate effort, to improve the relationship they say was strained with Eliza. At paragraph eighty of Sunnyfield's submissions, they say that it was not necessarily the case when Melissa was terminated, that it was against her interest to change providers. And in reference to that, and in support of that contention, they refer to the N D I S plans from August two thousand and nineteen and October two thousand and twenty. Now, those, the, the, the attempt to rely on those plans when the eviction notice had so long ago been served, where conciliation and mediation's been unsuccessful, where the eviction still stood, where two workers had been dismissed for serious misconduct and were facing criminal charges, and more than twenty-one months had passed since the decision to terminate the service agreement by Sunnyfield had been made. It is entirely disingenuous to suggest that those documents can, it can assist in any way to determine what, to determine what they think Melissa's best interests were at the time of eviction and that decision being made. We say that the submission itself evidences the dearth of consideration for Melissa's interests in their desperation to find something that might support the contention they make against counsel assisting's open adverse finding against them. It is open for the commission to find that the eviction was a culmination of Sunnyfield's inability to appropriately deal and respond to fair complaints of staffing and staffing practices by a guardian of one of their clients. Paragraph eighty-eight of Sunnyfield's submissions purportedly extracts a series of examples of the friction between Sunnyfield and Eliza. They are entirely out of context. They are entirely self-serving. The fact that those matters are submitted and intended to be relied upon for any purpose whatsoever against the backdrop of this case study and what has been brought to light. And as to what the Royal Commission has learned about what was going on at this Sunnyfield residence highlights the, the ongoing lack of appreciation and insight as to the gravity of the problems that Eliza was witnessing and very fairly and reasonably complaining about in relation to the care and support given by this organisation to her sister. None of these allegations in paragraph eighty-eight were put to Eliza, neither at the time they were made nor during this hearing. We note that in paragraph seventeen of Sunnyfield's submissions, they discourage findings, adverse findings, made in the context of an ongoing relationship. Melissa still lives in a Sunnyfield home. Yet they're content in their submissions to make comments and statements such as those outlined in paragraph eighty-eight, which invite disparaging and untested assertions against a witness to somehow in a nebulous way form the basis of decisions that Sunnyfield made. Those assertions in the submissions are hurtful, and they have the potential to damage the ongoing relationship further. They shouldn't have been made, and they, and given those submissions have been made, as counsel assisting submitted earlier, it shows a continued lack of insight by Sunnyfield as to the gravity and the import of what this Royal Commission has unearthed. I want to address the commission very briefly on one aspect of the ombudsman's submissions. The ombudsman has submitted in paragraph fifty-one that a reason why it was justified in not notifying Sunnyfield as to the information they had about the conduct of S P one was, quote, "That the serious allegation for which he'd been dismissed", and that was in two thousand and sixteen, "concerned fraud and not a matter involving risk of harm to residents." That distinction is a distinction with no, with no difference in the context of complaints related to the two thousand and sixteen allegations for dishonesty and misconduct in the administration of medication and in filling in time worksheets. That did involve risk of harm to residents. And it was substantiated by the employer at first instance and by the ombudsman. We say that the ombudsman clearly ought to, as adverse finding number twenty-five sets out, have notified Sunnyfield as to the the information they had related to S P one.
Okay, just, Mr O'Brien, just so I'm clear about that. You're referring to the last sentence of paragraph fifty-one, as I understand it. It's also relevant that the serious allegation for which he was dismissed concerned fraud and not a matter involving risk of harm. Are you saying that that allegation for which he was dismissed was fraud in relation to the administration of medication?
Yes, and the filling out of time worksheets.
Where do we find the, you don't have to answer immediately, but could you let us know either during the day or very shortly after today, where the relevant material is on it?
It's, you'll find it at first instance, at, at paragraph forty-seven in the statement of the ombudsman, Mr Paul Miller, which was tendered and is exhibited in the proceedings.
That's the source, is it? All right.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Those are my submissions, Chair, Commissioners, unless I can assist further.
I'll just ask whether Commissioner Galberly has any questions?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner McKeown?
Yes, just one question, Chair. Mr O'Brien, in, with respect to your recommendation about using CCTV as a safeguarding measure, have you either thought or considered other safeguarding measures that could also be considered as part of supporting and protecting the residents in the House?
Yes, very, very many, I'm, I'm certain of it. Can I take that on notice, please, Commissioner, and provide some of the evidence that Eliza gave in relation to that very issue when she was giving evidence before the commission as, as answered, in answer to questions by counsel assisting?
Thank you, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, if you would take that on notice, and of course, when you reply, which will be done within seven days, could you please ensure you provide copies of your answer to the other parties who have been given leave to appear?
Most certainly.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr O'Brien. All right, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Finesse, I think you're next on the list.
I am, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. There are seven matters I wish to address in respect of Council assisting's submissions and a number in respect of Sunnyfield submissions. But can I first say that an understanding of the role and purpose of the Ombudsman and his office is, in our submission, absent from both the submissions of Council assisting and Sunnyfield. And I refer the Commission to our submissions in relation to competence and compelability, and in particular paragraph nineteen, which I will read. This comes from the report of the Law Reform Commission in nineteen seventy-three, and the report at page one seventy-six states that section thirty-three is prompted by the special features of an Ombudsman's usual manner of working. He works privately and with free access to confidential information and documents. We think that complainants and public authorities must both be able to communicate with him without fear of their communications becoming public property or open to public scrutiny. A successful Ombudsman will be trusted by the person with whom he deals, and part of this trust will come from the knowledge that whatever is disclosed to him is disclosed on a confidential basis. For these reasons, we specify the only circumstances in which information may be disclosed, and for the same reasons, we propose section thirty-four. It is our submission that that context is necessary in understanding the powers and prohibitions in the Ombudsman's legislation.
Ms. Finesse, can I just make something clear from my point of view? There has been no issue raised on the claim of competence and compelability of the Ombudsman at this hearing. While I note that paragraph eighteen attempts to put some interpretation of what I said, I don't believe anything I said indicates that I have accepted the submissions about competence and compelability in the light of the provisions of the Royal Commissions Act. I don't have a concluded view about that. I think there are serious issues to be argued. The point is, they weren't argued, so we can operate on the basis that for the purposes of these hearings, a claim was made by the Ombudsman that he or his office were not competent or compellable as witnesses, and that hasn't been directly challenged. That, I think, is the starting point. Let us not assume that that will necessarily be accepted into the future.
Thank you, Chair. I note that Council assisting indicated this morning that she is not making any submission as to competence and compelability. So from that, and based on the procedural fairness tenets which apply, we take the view, and please tell us if we're wrong, that there will be no finding in respect of competence or compelability arising out of this.
I think I've made the position tolerably clear, Ms. Finesse.
Well, I'm sorry, Chair, it wasn't clear to me, but thank you very much, it is now. The first matter is the Council assisting submissions this morning. It was not clear to us whether the submission that the Ombudsman did not cooperate is pressed. And if it is pressed, then I have further submissions to make. If it isn't pressed, I can move on.
I take it that's a question directed to Ms. Eastman?
Chair, I saw that issue in the same light as the compelability issue. Our submissions addressed the fact that we extended the invitation on a number of occasions for the Ombudsman to participate voluntarily. He didn't avail himself of that opportunity. I don't go so far as to say that that was a deliberate or willful approach on the part of the Ombudsman not to participate. So with respect to my lone friend's contention, that's not a finding that I'm seeking.
Does that answer your question?
It does, and I might then, in those circumstances, make the brief submission that on our submissions, the Ombudsman is neither competent or compellable, therefore it must follow that any reference to a lack of cooperation is unavailable and missed. So moving then to my second point, and that is in relation to section thirty-four, subsection one, v two, in relation to disclosure to Sunnyfield. Now, again, it's not clear to us from the oral submissions this morning whether or not Council assisting is pressing that finding. There was no reference as far as we heard to that finding being pressed. And again, I'll make submissions.
I'll take that as a question directed to Ms. Eastman, who will no doubt clarify.
I'm pressing the finding as identified as finding number twenty-five in our written submissions of paragraph four hundred and fifty-three. The New South Wales Ombudsman should have disclosed to Sunnyfield the information gathered about S P one.
And that, of course, Ms. Finesse, has been supported by Mr. O'Brien's submissions this morning.
Thank you. We rely upon our written submissions, which deal at some length with the legislation, and the facts are set out in the evidence, and the application of those facts to the legislation to submit that indeed the legislation prohibited disclosure unless an exception applied. It's not a question of whether the Ombudsman had power or was responsible or obligated to provide that information to Sunnyfield. In our submission, the correct way of interpreting the legislation is that he and it was prohibited unless an exception applied.
How is that different, Ms. Finesse, than the Ombudsman having a power, assuming the exception applied?
In our submission, the difference is that when one has a power, frequently it is accompanied by a discretion. Where there is a prohibition, and there may be an exception to that prohibition, one in our submission must be satisfied that that exception applies. And that exception is in one v two, and if it's not before the Commissioners, I can read that section.
Now, it's in your submissions of paragraph forty-nine.
It is.
Yes, so we have that. So the question then is, as far as the submissions to which you are responding are concerned, the question is whether the Ombudsman believed on reasonable grounds that disclosure was necessary to prevent or lessen the likelihood of harm being done to any person?
Yes, but there's a further phrase in brackets, but only if the Ombudsman also believes on reasonable grounds that there is a risk of harm, including self-harm, being done to any person. So there are two limbs, if you like, to that exception.
Yes, it's a little bit difficult to see what the second limb adds to the first, but yes, I understand the point.
Now, in our submission regard, should be had to exhibit thirteen, two thirty, which is the Ombudsman's letter to the children's guardian, to understand the matters that were within the knowledge of the Ombudsman at the relevant time. Now, I don't propose to take the Commission through each of those, however, we do submit that it is that document that should be relied upon for an accurate and complete recitation of the events that were the subject of the Ombudsman's knowledge at the relevant time. In short, there were five allegations in two thousand and three to five, all of which were not substantiated, and that was some fourteen or so years earlier, three allegations in two thousand and sixteen, two were not substantiated, only one which was fraud, which in our submission relates to his timesheets and not the client's medication, which certainly may amount to misconduct, but unlikely to fraud. And we say that that finding was unrelated to violence and neglect or abuse. And the allegations in two thousand and seventeen, which were the most recent in time, were all unsubstantiated. And in our submission, the reference to the two thousand and eighteen allegations are spurious because they were, of course, known to Sunnyfield because they were made by Sunnyfield. Now, we submit that section thirty-four, one, v two, requires a current belief by the Ombudsman, and that those dated, unsubstantiated in relation to risk of harm allegations could not bind a current risk of harm being done to any person. Now, Chair, you inquired earlier what indeed would be necessary if that information was known to the Ombudsman. And if it's convenient, I'll address that now. In our submission, that form a reasonable view about current risk of harm, one needs a currency of allegations. Allegations that are some fourteen or fifteen years old that have not been substantiated could never, in our submission, satisfy the test in section thirty-four, one, v two. They're simply too old, as well as being unsubstantiated. The only substantiated allegation is in relation to fraud, and that is not a matter that goes to risk of harm. So in terms of what would be needed, it's a speculative hypothetical exercise, but nevertheless, in our submission, currency and substantiation would be needed, each of which is absent.
Yes, I think it was actually Ms. Eastman that asked the question, not me, but that's the answer.
Now, the fourth matter I wish to deal with is found in exhibit thirteen, two, two, seven. Council assisting referred to, and I don't have the transcript in front of me, but referred to an assessment by a current officer, or current at the relevant time officer, of the Ombudsman as to the rigor of an investigation conducted some thirteen years prior. And if I can refer to exhibit thirteen, twenty, two, two, seven, which is an email dated the twentieth of March two thousand and eighteen.
Yes, could we bring that up if possible, please? Thank you.
Now, that is an email that was written by a senior investigation officer of the Ombudsman to somebody else, three other people it appears, in the Ombudsman, copied to two further. And that, on its face, refers to a two thousand and five allegation, and noted that at the time that that matter was investigated by the Ombudsman, that the Ombudsman found that the office for the investigation, that is, by the provider, was satisfactory. And this person, this senior investigation officer, expressed the view in two thousand and eighteen, as I say, some thirteen years later, on her review, her assessment was the agency's investigation lacked rigor. Now, in our submission, that is no more than the view of a relatively junior officer of a review that she conducted some thirteen years later. And in our submission, one cannot elevate that comment in an internal email to the view of the Ombudsman.
What does that last paragraph mean? We assess the finding as being reasonable based on the available evidence. That's the view of the senior investigation officer who has prepared this email. Is that the position?
Well, there are two interpretations. One is that that first assess in that paragraph should be assessed. That's how, that's how we read it. We assess, we, the Ombudsman's office, assess the finding as being reasonable based on the available evidence obtained back in two thousand and five.
Sorry, that's an assessment made in March two thousand and eighteen.
As I read it, there are, as I say, two interpretations. One is reading it literally, it suggests that it's two thousand and eighteen, which doesn't make sense with the rest of the paragraph. The second interpretation is that it should be in the past tense. We assess the finding as being reasonable, and then that's repeated again, effectively. We assess the investigation as being satisfactory. However, on my review, current, two thousand and eighteen, it is my assessment that the agency's investigation lacked rigor.
And the agency is the Ombudsman?
No, the agency is the provider who investigated the allegation and reported it to their Ombudsman.
I see. So it will make sense if the word assess, which is the second word in the paragraph, reads assessed.
That's certainly our submission.
All right, thank you.
Now, turning to the fifth matter, and this arises from Council assisting this morning, and it may be that I've actually addressed this because she spoke in terms of there being no obligation or requirement to disclose anything. I think I've addressed that by reference to it being an exception to a prohibition. Now, the sixth matter, Council assisting submitted that the Royal Commission may be assisted by submissions and the like later in respect of competence and compelability, and that's a matter that you, Chair, raised earlier. I take it then that if this issue in respect of the Ombudsman is to be agitated at some further stage, clearly the Ombudsman will be given an opportunity to participate in that.
I think that's a fair assumption.
Now, finally, in relation to Council assisting, there was reference to the Commonwealth submissions in respect of the issue of choice and control, and it was suggested by someone, the Chair, I believe, that we might be able to assist in whether or not the Ombudsman made a finding in respect of that matter. And if that's a matter that's still pressed, I can assist.
Yes, please do.
Exhibit thirteen, three oh seven, is a letter from the Ombudsman to Sunnyfield dated eighteen December two thousand and eighteen. On page two of that letter, the second last paragraph, it is stated that we, that is the Office of the Ombudsman or the Ombudsman, do not accept that presenting standard service agreements that are unable to be modified is consistent with the N D I A terms of business or the expectations of practice under the N D I S.
Yes, thank you. It's a matter of great relief that my recollection sometimes is moderately accurate. Thank you.
And I turn then to the submissions of Sunnyfield. Can I first make the general observation that at no stage in Sunnyfield's submissions do they engage with the law in respect of the Ombudsman or the Office of the Children's Guardian? There are various broad assertions made without any attempt to bring those assertions within the confines of the law, and we rely upon our various written submissions as to what that may be. In addition to comments in relation to the Ombudsman, there were comments made in relation to the Office of the Children's Guardian, and those comments were made without any regard to what a legal position may be and should be, and our submission rejected. Can I then just refer to some particular paragraphs of Sunnyfield's submissions? Firstly, paragraph sixty-three. Sixty-three, the last sentence is in relation to the Ombudsman declining to give evidence on the basis that he wasn't competent to do so. Sunnyfield notes that Sunnyfield was unable to explore this issue with him, and the issue being notifying Sunnyfield. In our submission, I had available to them the two statements which set that out, that in any event, does not seek to engage with the competence or compelability of the Ombudsman, particularly the competence in that regard. Sixty, paragraph sixty-seven, there's reference to it being bizarre, I quote, "the Ombudsman's office appeared with encouraged a conciliated outcome in relation to Melissa remaining in the house." The evidence, as I understand it, is clear and uncontroversial that Melissa wanted to remain in the house, and indeed remains in the house. Paragraph sixty-nine, reference to a consistent line of allegations against S P one dating back to two thousand and three. I merely note there that the consistent line does not engage with the fraud allegation, which was the only one that we know is found through. does not engage with the fraud allegation, which was the only one that we know was found through. Paragraph seventy, regrettably, the comment is, the OCG did not identify Sunnyfield of any change to the working of children's status. Firstly, there's no evidence whatsoever as to what the OCG did or didn't do, had the power to do or not to do, nor whether or not there was any change to that status. That paragraph should be rejected. Paragraphs one hundred and eleven and one hundred and thirteen are to similar effect, broad brush comments about the Ombudsman and the OCG without any attempt to engage in any legal basis. Paragraph seventy-two, if I can then turn to that, there's reference using language which we say is inappropriate given the lack of engagement with the law. In paragraph seventy-two, sub-paragraph B, there's reference to the Ombudsman's conduct. Conduct is an entirely inappropriate and unavailable concept in relation to the legislation which prevail. Similarly, in relation to sub-paragraph C, there's reference to information being withheld from Sunnyfield by more than one government agency. There's only evidence about one agency. There's no question of it being withheld. There's no reference to the legislative basis for the decision that was made not to disclose the information. Similarly, the end of that sub-paragraph is reference to non-communication of relevant matters by two government agencies. They should be rejected. Now, there were also various submissions and references made to the Ombudsman declining to give evidence. And again, Sunnyfield chose to or failed to engage with the law as to compelability or competence. However, we note that when specifically asked whether they wished a summons to be addressed to the Ombudsman, said they did not. They are our submissions.
Thank you, Ms Van Ness. I'll ask Commissioner Gibley whether she has any questions of you.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McKeown?
No, thank you.
In that case, Ms Van Ness, thank you very much for your submissions. I'm not sure whether the Commonwealth wishes to make any oral submissions in addition to the written submissions that we have received. Would that be clarified, please?
Thank you, Chair. And no, we do not wish to advance any further oral submissions. And at some stage, when convenient to the Chair, I can clarify the opening paragraph that was referred to by counsel assisting.
Yes, please. Yes, please do. And then I'll invite Commissioners, if they have any questions of you, to put them to you. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. The, 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 the specific reference by counsel assisting was to paragraph four. And lest the wrong impression be conveyed, all that was sought to be said there was that the effect of the submissions, as you have seen, it is under section B scope of the submissions, was that where a matter was not being, was not relevant to the Commonwealth, then no comment would be made about it. But to the extent that the Commonwealth could assist, or it may assist the Royal Commission, that submissions had been made and that is set out at paragraph three. It was simply a reference of relevance rather than any comments on the substance of the findings themselves.
Thank you for that. Perhaps you might also, while you're interpreting the written submissions, go to paragraph ten and indicate what was intended to be conveyed by that paragraph. I asked that because it wasn't quite clear to me what point was being made.
Certainly, Chair. And in that respect, we would urge that seven to twelve, paragraph seven to twelve, be read together in that the comment was made by counsel assisting, or the submission was made, that it may be an area of further inquiry for the Royal Commission into what is choice and control and what that actually means as a statutory object for people who are, have disability with high support needs and have and want appropriate choice of control everywhere and with whom they live. And that is at paragraph five hundred and three of counsel assisting submissions. And what was sought to be drawn out there in light of what was a would be an important point for the Royal Commission is what choice and control would actually mean in a statutory and then practical sense when trying to give effect to it and to maximize the choice and control in circumstances similar to or that might be expected to be found, such as were in this case study. And in particular, for example, the evidence that was given by Commissioner Head, and that was in his statement to the Royal Commission, it wasn't traversed orally, that what is to be done where the Commission does not have the power to compel a provider to provide a service, yet there has been some sort of breakdown. How is choice and control to be even practical effective implementation and maximized in those circumstances?
The proposition is that if the NDIS Commission doesn't have the power to direct certain actions, then it's not a denial of choice and control by the Commission if, in fact, it does not intervene since it doesn't have power to do so. Is that the point?
No, it's, it's to separate the notion of choice and control from the practical effects of it, such that the denial in and of itself would turn our attention and our submission to how the NDIS Commission and the NDIA can ensure that the choice and control as one of a number of entitlements of a participant would be able to maintain, such as through continuity of the service or as seamless a transition as possible to another service. And that would incorporate in the notions of the of those matters referred to by the Commissioner in his statement, and that is going to the practice standard rules and other guidelines.
All right, thank you. I might ask Commissioner Gibley now whether she has any questions of you in relation to the submissions made on behalf of the Australian Government.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, given the importance that you ascribe to the exercising of choice and control, taking into account the statements you've just made, but particularly with regard to the role of specialist support coordination for developing choice and control in just this group that we're talking about for people in group homes. Is it some, is some, is anything being considered to be placing in packages of every person in a group home, specialist support coordination? That's my first question.
Let's pause, let's pause there, I think, and then come back to your second question. Yes, Mr Dyke?
Thank you. Commissioner, to answer your question directly, and then I'll provide some context. To answer your question directly, I am not aware, and I can take those instructions and provide that information as soon as possible. I can, by way of context, say that the issue of utilization and effectiveness of specialist support coordinators is something that is exercising the relevant sections of the NDIA. And that a particular pattern was that it seems that there is unspent funds in coordination, in the specialist coordination packages arising out of those who have been given them. The issue then arises is whether or not there is some way in which the manner in which the services are provided or the ways in which they are understood can be improved. And that is currently the subject of a course of work being done by the NDIA to improve those specialist support coordination outcomes, some of which may have some relevance to the question that you asked, Commissioner. But as a direct answer, we will provide that information to you.
Thank you. Well, my second question follows up on that one. And that is the issue of the independence of the provision of specialist support coordination, completely separate from the entity of the service provider. Given that the, in exercising choice and control, people may wish to be supported to have a look at alternative ways of service provision being provided or even living arrangements. So is there a plan to require that support coordination be provided independent, completely of the service provider to prevent any conflict of interest?
And I, I will take instruction on the very specific point of your question. My understanding is that there, on the evidence that was led in the Commission, is that there is not a requirement. And I can take Commissioner Ute or the references to Mr McNorton's evidence during the course of the Commission, where the, the issue was while there was a strong preference for that to be the case, that is, that level of independence, while there was a maturing market or in the circumstances of a thin market, such a requirement may have the adverse consequences of either depriving a participant of a service that might otherwise be available to them or in other, some other way eroding their potential choice and control if that's something that they actually want. I can take Commissioner Ute to the specific references of that. But as to your specific question, no, I'm not aware of a plan or a requirement.
I've just added another question, if that's all right, Chair, just following up. In that case, if there's any suggestion that not choosing to have an independent support coordinator is illustrative of genuine choice and control, I'd like you to spell that, I'd like that to be spelled out a lot more thoroughly. How would that be exercising genuine choice and control rather than using the term in a very broad and slightly flexible way?
Yes. I'm sorry, can I make sure I understand your question, Commissioner? Is that, is it you, are you asking me whether or not there is a specific way in which are there any circumstances in which independent support coordination would be permissible?
No, my question was really referring to Mr McNorton's evidence where he said, well, he implied, well, some people might choose to not have independent specialist support coordination, and that's their choice and control. And I thought that was a, I was asking a question about whether that's an appropriate use of the term choice and control, actually. And that refers to your first statement of putting more meat on the bones of what choice and control really means for people in group homes.
I understand. I, I can't advance that in particular without getting some more information on that specific point. But again, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
Mr Dyke, if you could, if you could follow the same procedure, let us have that information in writing within seven days and of course provide copies to the other parties who have leave to appear.
I have one more question, if that's all right.
Oh, one more question.
This is the question relating to any plans that there may be to require that an occupancy agreement and a service agreement are provided by separate entities, genuinely separate entities too, not Chinese screen separate entities, so that each resident can choose their own service provider with their cell package, can choose whichever service provider they wish to have with their cell package.
I understand, Commissioner. And again, I note your advised use of the word require in circumstances where the evidence of Mr McNorton went to preference. As to a future plan to make that a requirement, I don't, again, I don't have those direct instructions, but it is something I can obtain.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner McKeown, do you have any questions?
Just one, perhaps as a follow-up, just to that last question, Mr Dyke. It relates specifically to paragraph forty-seven in your submission. If, if there is, if there are multiple agreements, for example, an occupancy agreement and a service agreement, can you tell me if both of those are reviewed as part of the NDIS practice standards and quality indicators? Thank you.
My understanding, and this is an understanding, it wasn't reflected on the evidence in the hearing, so I would immediately qualify by, we will check and come back to you if it's the case, but my understanding is yes.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr Dyke, if you could do that. Just one more question for me. Paragraph thirty-two of your written submission expressed support for counsel assisting submission that Sunnyfield should not have asserted legal professional privilege over any of Ms Pio's reports and that they should have been provided in full to the NDIS Commission. How, what is the reasoning behind that support expressed for counsel assisting submission?
Close on the evidence that was given by Commissioner Head in the hearing, and I think in response to a question from you, Chair, where if the investigation has been either sought or is known to be part of the complaint and compliance process as between the provider and the NDIS Commission, the, it would seem, in your words, it was, it was consistent. And in the words of Commissioner Head, it was in the spirit of the process, that the results of that investigation would be provided in full rather than a summary of it.
Yes, thank you. I understand. Thank you very much, Mr Dyke. It's now one, twelve forty, or nearly twelve forty. I suggest that we resume at one thirty. And then that will, will start at that time with the submissions to be made on behalf of Sunnyfield. Thank you. So we'll adjourn till one.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. Royal Commission is now in session.
Thank you. Yes, Mr Dyke.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, if I may, I'd like to start with the issue of corporate governance. There are three adverse findings in particular that counsel assisting seeks in relation to this issue. If I can deal with finding three first. And the adverse finding, as it is expressed, it uses language such as failure to insure and and talks about posing a risk that direct and lived experience of people with a disability was not represented. Using that sort of language in our submission is suggestive of wrongdoing. Sunnyfield resists that, the suggestion that there is any wrongdoing in the way in which its corporate governance is structured. That does not mean that Sunnyfield does not accept its procedures and its governance structures could not be enhanced and improved. The current model, and Commissioners, you may recall some evidence about this, and there are some submissions about this. The current model is that there's a membership structure. And the membership structure allows indirect representation of people with disability through family members and guardians. There's also an informal way in which those people are supported in that there's an appointment to the Board of Members. And so ordinarily, if someone becomes a director, they, they usually have a connection with someone with disability. And if one looks at the bios of the board members, there are a number of them who have a direct connection to people with disability. And so there's an understanding there. It's submitted of board directors of the needs of persons with disability.
Mr Dyke, isn't there, isn't there a difference between people with lived experience with disability, that is, people with disability, and people who may be family members or supporters of people with lived experience with disability? Your submission seemed to equate a board member who has, and I understand that obviously the family issues and so forth that would be related to this, but a board member who has a child or knows somebody who's got or knows somebody who's got a particular disability, that doesn't make that family member a person with lived experience of disability in the relevant sense, does it?
Of course, and it's accepted that we should have been more careful in the language used in that submission. The experience is a vicarious one, it's not a direct experience of having lived with disability, and I accept your point in relation to that, Chair.
Yes, I'm not minimizing that experience of family members and so forth. I'm just querying the use of that language which does appear in the submission.
Yes, no, I accept that point. In any event, the point I'm seeking to make is that Sunnyfield embraces ways in which it can better give representation to people with disability, whether that's on its board or as part of its senior leadership team, or in some other way to give it a voice. The issue taken in relation to the recommended finding is that it's very negative. Sunnyfield submits that it would be better to express it as a positive recommendation rather than saying there's a failure, there's a risk and so on. So for example, the positive recommendation might be that disability service providers should strive to enhance representation of people with disability on the board. There should be structures to encourage nomination and election of board members who have disability. Commissioner Galbally during the hearing raised a good point, and that was that it's a fairly common practice to have a director who is a person with disability and also a leader in their community on the board of an organisation such as Sunnyfield. We would embrace recommendations along those lines. There may be other suggested recommendations such as the use of board subcommittees, which could include members on those subcommittees who have lived experience with disability or who are employees working in shared living accommodation, so that so that that perspective can also find representation.
Mr Duggan, if Sunnyfield accepts the virtue of what you've just described, what's to stop it or has stopped it doing something about it?
Nothing, absolutely nothing, Chair. And the Royal Commission and this forum has been beneficial in terms of shining a light on the structures of the organisation. And it's accepted that the model that was put in place for Sunnyfield was put in place a long time ago and may need updating. There's no doubt about that. And we're open to that discussion and to positive recommendations.
And are you able to tell us that Sunnyfield has in fact done anything to embrace these propositions, or is this something for the future for Sunnyfield Board to consider?
I'm not in a position to set out any particular changes it's made in terms of its board structure. I would anticipate that the constitution would need to be changed if there were formal changes to be made to the way in which board members are elected. But I don't have any further material to put to the commission that wasn't raised during the public hearing.
As I understood your submissions, they are to the effect that it would not be open as a matter of law for Sunnyfield, for example, to include on the board a person with intellectual disability. Is that your position?
No, and I apologize for the ambiguity in relation to that. It was really a reference to the fact that during the hearing, the CEO, Ms Cuddy, he gave evidence that one of the reasons there may not be appointments to the board of persons with intellectual disability was the issue of capacity. Now, the perception that capacity may be an obstacle to appointment is a matter that needs to be taken into account. Now, if there is no issue in relation to that, then that's one thing. But the Law Reform Commission looked into issues of capacity in some detail, and it was clear that supported decision-making was the key to to having people with intellectual disability serve in leadership positions like on the board. But it wasn't intended through the submission to suggest that you could not have a person with intellectual disability on the board. No, that was not the submission.
No, well, I must say, I did read it that way, but thank you for that clarification. You or the board you represent may be familiar with the Council for Intellectual Disability. Do you know of that organisation?
No, I don't, Chair.
Well, if you did, and you go to the annual report, you will see that the Council for Intellectual Disability, which has an income between two and three million dollars a year, so it's not trivial, has a number of people with intellectual disability on the board, including the Chair. So it would be odd if that organisation somehow was in conflict with legal requirements. We have had a number of people from CID give evidence at these hearings. So it's not as though there isn't a precedent for, and that's an incorporated body limited by guarantee, charitable status as is Sunnyfield. So in case anybody needs a precedent, there it is.
I'm indebted to the Commission for pointing that out, thank you. Can I deal next with adverse finding four? If I may, and that dealt with a slightly different issue, that dealt with the waiting on the board of those with financial or commercial experience rather than people with direct experience of providing support services to people with disability. So it wasn't talking about board representation with people with lived experience of disability. It was relating to those who provide the support services. The criticism really seems to be that the board is too corporate. It's submitted that that's an unfair criticism for a couple of reasons. The first reason is that implicit in the criticism is that it suggests the current board don't understand the challenges of providing support services to people with disability. And I would commend the bios of a number of the directors to the commission which is set out in our written submissions to demonstrate that that's clearly not the case. There clearly is an understanding of the current board of the issues provided, of the issues related to the provision of support services.
Why would we draw that conclusion from the bios?
There are, I can take you, Chair, to the details, but there are a number of directors who have children or close relatives with disability, and it's clear from reading the bios that they have that they would have been exposed to the issues relating to the provision of supports for those people.
I understand that, and I understand what it means to have a relative or someone close who has a serious disability. I'm just wondering why that fact provides the necessary experience and expertise to provide the services that this organisation provides and ensures that, not just in relation to the family member, but generally, there are safeguards in place that will prevent violence, abuse, neglect, exploitation of people under the care of the organisation. It's not obvious to me that it necessarily followed.
Some of those directors do have or have had family members who were resident at Sunnyfield or receiving services from Sunnyfield.
I follow that.
But just in relation to the wording of the recommended adverse finding, it refers to people with direct experience of providing support services. In my submission, that there would be an understanding on the part of those directors on the board who have family members as to as to the nature of the support services and what issues might arise.
What do you say about Dr Carter, who apparently considers that Sunnyfield has been incredibly supportive to [BLEEP] and to his family and many years, and has always gone the extra, yeah, that's in relation to his own child, is it?
Sorry.
It's page sixteen. Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned the name, but there's a daughter. I'm just wondering what the relevance of that is in a submission. The fact that somebody considers that a relative has been well-treated elsewhere within the organisation, how does that help? It's page sixteen at number nine.
Oh, thank you.
And I shouldn't have mentioned the name, we'll redact the name.
I don't think that has particular relevance to this issue that we're discussing at the moment.
Thank you.
But there is an issue about, I withdraw that submission. So just going back to the issue of this criticism in the recommended finding, the second issue that I wanted to address is that it is a large and complex organisation in a heavily regulated sector, dealing with over 1,200 clients and staff of over 1,000 with employment costs over $80 million. The importance of suitably qualified individuals on the board is underscored by a couple of examples. One is Endeavour, that was a disability services organisation that was taken over by Sunnyfield in the Hunter Valley because that had some financial issues, as I understand it. And there's also the example of Disability Services Australia, which the commission may be aware of, recently went into voluntary administration. That is an organisation of a similar size to Sunnyfield. The criticism in recommended finding four seems to be that you shouldn't have a weighting towards people with financial or commercial experience. Those two examples illustrate why such why such experience is necessary.
Mr Duggan, I would have thought what it demonstrates, what I would have thought that it demonstrates is that where you have an organisation that has an income stream of something like $100 million a year, you need some people on the board who understand fully the financial aspects of the organisation and understand the management practices that are required to ensure that the organisation remains solvent and uses its resources wisely. That's a very different thing from saying that the organisation should consist almost entirely of such people. That's the issue, I think, that Ms Eastman was raising in the submissions that she has put. Nobody, I don't think, is suggesting, I doubt that Commissioners Galbally or McEwan are going to suggest that there ought to be nobody on a board that has financial expertise. It's the balance, it's the understanding of the needs and aspirations of people with disability, in this case, people with intellectual disability, and the need to ensure not just that family members are looked after, but that everybody is.
Well, I certainly agree with that, and there's a distinction between the point I was making in relation to representation of people with lived experience of disability, and this recommended finding, which seems to be slightly differently expressed, which talks about having representation on the board of people with experience of providing support services, which is a slightly different issue.
It's all right, thank you.
Can I next address the issue of visits, which is recommended adverse finding five? That seeks a finding that there was no operational system for board directors to make regular visits to Sunnyfield Shared Independent Living Houses. Can I please take the commission to an extra A to our submissions at page seven? I'm not sure whether that can come up on the screen. Or how easy it is to locate.
I'm not sure whether that can be brought up.
All right, can I assume that...
Yeah, Mr Duggan, I'm sorry about that, but if you don't mind, just proceed, and if there is some way of bringing it up, I'm sure that those responsible will do so.
Thank you. The top of the document appears to be part of a board pack in November 2019. If you look under the heading for noting, it says, "Directors have requested to visit Sunnyfield Services across New South Wales and the ACT for the purposes of organisational familiarisation, gaining knowledge, and undertaking workplace health and safety inspections." "Group tours of Sunnyfield Services were very difficult to organise, or are very difficult to organise, regarding suitable timing for directors and are imposing for clients and staff whilst delivering normal services." So the first thing that indicates is that the directors were trying to achieve this, that they did actually want to engage in visits to the facilities, including the shared living accommodation.
In November 2019?
Yes. The proposal is set out under the heading there that directors and associates individually book with the CEO office so that visits could be undertaken with minimal service interruption. And then there's a schedule as to how that might occur, and shared living is included in that. And then at the end of that table, there's a reference to a director's feedback form for the service visit, so that various thoughts could be captured. And that feedback form is over the page, which allows the director to indicate what is working, what is not working, and so on.
And what is it that you derive from this, Mr Duggan?
The, what we seek to derive is that it demonstrates adverse finding five should not be made because there was a system in place for board directors to make regular visits, or at least it was proposed. And the evidence of Ms Cuddy was that this did not go ahead because of COVID restrictions.
This demonstrates that something was proposed in November 2019.
Yes.
But the question that arises is, why wasn't it done long before? And that's, I think, what the finding boasted.
Well, the final, the proposed finding says that there was no operational system, pardon me, at the time of the public hearing. So assuming that means May 2021, the point being made is that there was a system proposed, but there was a reason it didn't go ahead, and that was the onset of COVID.
But was there a reason why there was no such system well before November 2019?
I don't, I'd have to seek instructions on that. But the point, I suppose the point being made is that the directors, the board, have asked to visit the facilities, including the shared living homes. And there appears to be a criticism in adverse finding five that there's no operational system, or that the directors were trying to put one in place in November 2019.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can I deal next with the issue of causation? Chair, you raised the very valid point that you can have concurrent causes in terms of an event. And it's clear that something went wrong in the house. There's no doubt about that. However, the issue for Sunnyfield in terms of the adverse findings made against it is that they isolate Sunnyfield, and they make findings which are taken, we say, out of context. And the reason for that is that there's an interconnectedness between a disability service provider and government entities and other service providers in terms of the information flow and in terms of the processes that disability service providers have in place. And to take Sunnyfield in isolation without looking at the other information available, in this case in relation to SP1, is unfair. It's not a question of an inability to have concurrent causes. We accept, of course, that there can be concurrent causes for an event. But it's more a question of taking things out of context. And can I deal in that regard to the Ombudsman's submissions? And hopefully...
Just before we get there, can I just put the context as I see it? There are two possibilities. Either the Ombudsman should have conveyed information relating to SP1's Either the Ombudsman should have conveyed information relating to SP1's anti-seeds, or the response, the Ombudsman, as Ms Finesse submits, was entitled, if not bound, not to divulge the information.
Yes.
If the latter, then the only relevant actions or inactions are those of Sunnyfield. Is that not right?
We wouldn't look at it in such a binary way, Chair. It may be that the Ombudsman was not obliged to disclose this information at law, but that may be something that the Commission wishes to express a view on, whether, whether that's an acceptable state of affairs.
Well, now, let's pause there. There may be two separate questions. Whether it's a good idea for an Ombudsman to have that degree of immunity, well, that's a question of policy legislative judgment. Let's take the situation as it was at the relevant time. If the Ombudsman was, as Ms Finesse submits, prevented from divulging the information, it must follow, doesn't it, that the only relevant actor, as far as the abuse of these premises was concerned, was Sunnyfield?
Well, there's SP1, of course, but as a, as a matter of logic, Sunnyfield is certainly, can't resist the proposition that something went wrong in a house that it provided services for.
I'm putting a rather different proposition to you, and that is that if Ms Finesse is right, it's only Sunnyfield that could have prevented the violence and abuse that concededly took place at the premises. And it's not taking anything out of context to look at what Sunnyfield could and should have done to prevent that.
Well, as an organisation, that may be true. There may be individual workers in the house who could have done something, including SP2. There's also the issue of the relationship between service providers. So in this case, SP1 was a, had had working with children checks carried out by a number of service providers in 2017, 2018. And there's an issue as to how those service providers communicate with each other. So there was no communication to Sunnyfield, and I'm not suggesting there is any legal obligation to do this, but there was no communication between any of the previous employers of SP1 and Sunnyfield.
All right. Well, let's assume, for the sake of argument, that the New South Wales Ombudsman had power to divulge this information to Sunnyfield, but did not do so. What I'm struggling with is how that diminishes Sunnyfield's responsibility in any way. Can you explain, can you explain how it diminishes Sunnyfield's responsibility for a state of affairs at the premises? That is, a fact that somebody else could have stopped it, but didn't. Does that alter Sunnyfield's responsibility?
No, but the submission being made is that there's an unfairness in singling out Sunnyfield for its conduct, if, if that finding ignores the context. And particularly the context in which a government agency was possessed of knowledge about SP1 that was far greater than...
I thought you answered my question, no, it doesn't diminish Sunnyfield's responsibility. But then what followed was, but Sunnyfield isn't as responsible as otherwise would be the case. I'm not sure that your first answer is consistent with the rest of your answer.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that Sunnyfield's responsibility is diminished. What I'm suggesting is that there's an unfairness in singling out Sunnyfield's conduct and isolating its conduct and examining its conduct in isolation to what, what was known about SP1 by government agencies and by other individuals. But I'm not suggesting it diminishes the conduct. Or the responsibility, rather.
All right, thank you.
If I may develop the submission in relation to what the Ombudsman has said in writing, what the Ombudsman says in its submission, paragraph 53, is that it was not surprising that the decision was ultimately made not to send the information to Sunnyfield. This is the information about SP1 and previous allegations. That submission assumes that there was in fact a decision that was made not, not to send the information. There's no evidence before this commission that there was a positive decision not to send the information. And can I go to exhibit 319 to, to develop that point? And if possible, to, to have that brought up on the screen? Thank you, to whoever's operating the computer. That document is a file note of a case meeting with the Deputy Ombudsman on 7 November 2018. And it discusses on the first page various allegations made against SP1 and refers to section 34 at the bottom of, of the page. But it's page three in particular that I want to draw the Commission's attention to. Page three says that specifically in relation to SP1 and the release of information, and there's an individual name there, who I assume is the Deputy Ombudsman, advised, "We release information to Sunnyfield, current employer, and to all the agencies he has currently verified for working with children checks. We can do this under section 34.1b2." And then it sets out that process and the question of forming a belief about likelihood of harm and so on. And then it says, "In our letter to these agencies, we state a lot of allegations over a period of time, doesn't need to reach findings, consider re-risks." So at that point at least, there appears to be a belief on the part of the Deputy Ombudsman at least, that there is some likelihood of harm, and we would embrace the concept that that's a reasonable belief. That, that position, as we understand it from the documents, did not ever change. There were a number of drafts then prepared to Ms Currighy as CEO of Sunnyfield informing Sunnyfield of the various allegations against SP1. And those iterative drafts seem to change minimally over time, but, but were never sent and never finalised. If I can go to, please, the next exhibit, which is 231. And it's, I think, page three of that document. Page three of that document is one of the draft letters to Ms Currighy that was never sent. And there's a notation at the top in handwriting, 12 December 2018, phone call from, and one assumes that's the Deputy Ombudsman, "released to the OCG under 16A and liaise with someone, read this." Now, it's a bit ambiguous as to what this is, whether it's the draft letter or the 16A release, but that's, that's the form of the letter to be signed by the Deputy Ombudsman that was never sent. So in December, or mid-December, there's certainly a belief, one would have thought, that this should still be sent, consistent with the first document I took the Commission to. There is then a reference in the Ombudsman's submissions to the fact that the Deputy Ombudsman finished up in his role sometime in December. And that's at paragraph 35 of the Ombudsman's submissions, I don't need to go to that. But then, the next document I'd like to go to is exhibit 230. And that is the letter that was sent to the Office of the Children's Guardian. And the Commission will note the date at the top, 7 January 2018. It's clear from the context that that's a typo, that that's actually January 2019 that that letter was sent. This is the chapter 16A notification to the OCG about SP1. But the relevance of this document is that it seems that there was contemplation that the OCG would be informed about SP1 and Sunnyfield would be. The Deputy Ombudsman resigns or retires or leaves office in December 2018, and then the trail goes cold in relation to Sunnyfield. Now, it's not open to the Commission to make a positive finding that this just slipped through the cracks, but that is certainly a possibility. And the ultimate submission being made is that there's no evidence that a positive decision was made not to send this information to Sunnyfield.
We just have the rest of that document brought up on the screen, just, it may not be anything else relevant. Thank you. Can you remind us, please, of the criterion or criteria for the release of information under chapter 16A of the children and young persons?
I'm just looking it up now. There, there are some objects and principles set out at section 245, capital A.
I, I don't want you to go through the act as we're going. I thought there might be a short answer, we can, we can have a look at the relevant provisions ourselves, but I was just wondering about the relevance of this document to the submission you're making.
The, the section is 245C, but that section relates to the safety, welfare and wellbeing of a particular child or young person. And that concept of welfare, safety and wellbeing really relates to the fact that SP1 may pose a risk to persons within his care. Now, there was some reference in some of the earlier documents as to why the OCG needed to be informed. And it's submitted, it's clear from the internal consideration within the Ombudsman's office, that it, that the concern was that SP1 was a risk to people within, within his care. The other issue is that the Children's Guardian is the entity that provides the working with children checks. In one of these documents, there's a list of the, of those checks which had been verified by the office to a number of the service providers. And so it's submitted that it's relevant to that function, that as part of the policies and procedures of disability service organisations in recruitment, they obtain a police check, they obtain a working with children check and so on. That's one of the reasons why the Ombudsman would be looking to, to inform the Office of the Children's Guardian under chapter 16A of this information. But, but the, bring it back to, to the point, there's a submission made by the Ombudsman, and I think it's at paragraph 53 of the Ombudsman's submissions. The second sentence, "The test which requires the Ombudsman to believe on reasonable grounds that there is a risk of harm was clearly not met." The Commission would not accept that submission, particularly in circumstances where all of the Ombudsman's internal documentation suggests that it was met.
Mr Duggan, I understand that submission, I understand what you're saying about the absence of the Ombudsman notifying Sunnyfield about SP1 as a risk to people within his care. When I, when one reads your submissions as a whole, it does have the flavour that if you, if we were to find that the Ombudsman should have released this information, that somehow exonerates Sunnyfield. And that's the connection I have great difficulty with, and I'm not quite sure why the actions or inaction of the Ombudsman have anything much to do with the issues confronting Sunnyfield.
It, it doesn't exonerate Sunnyfield, that's not the intent of the submission. But if I can go to finding 11, is perhaps the best way to discuss this issue. Adverse finding 11 says that Sunnyfield's specific policies and processes for preventing and responding to violence and so on failed. Now, one of the policies and processes is conducting police checks, conducting working with children checks, relying on government agencies to provide information about employees. If, if the adverse recommendation, sorry, adverse finding is that the recruitment policies failed in that relevant respect, or that Sunnyfield's policies failed because it didn't carry out the right checks or didn't access the right information, then that must be viewed in the context of what it was told by others and what it was required to be told by others. Really, Sunnyfield in one sense was operating with its hands tied behind its back in relation to a critical piece of information, that being that SP1 had had a series of very serious allegations made against him and was a risk. So that's, that's...
I think, as was discussed with Ms Eastman, as I follow it, the thrust of this proposed finding is not so much the recruitment of SP1 as the failure, as the argument proceeds, of Sunnyfield to act upon the multiple red flags that have been identified. And had Sunnyfield done that, then it would have implemented its procedures in a way that prevented, would have prevented the violence and abuse that was experienced by people at the home. I think that's the substance of what is being put.
Yes. The question is precisely what policies and procedures failed and, and what can Sunnyfield as an organisation do better in the future to address that? It's not really identified with great clarity as to what policies and procedures are being talked about in this adverse finding 11. Can I, can I address a further issue in relation to, to the policies and procedures and how they operate? Can I take the Commission to exhibit 319, please? This is a document I went to a moment ago, which is the case meeting with the Deputy Ombudsman. Can I go to page two of this document, please? This is advice provided by the Deputy Ombudsman in relation to recruitment tracks and probity inquiries and so on of Sunnyfield in relation to SP1. It's expressed in various ways, but perhaps number five is, is the clearest way in which the advice is expressed. And that says, "Prospective employees to declare any inquiry investigation, they have, they have been subject to whilst employed by any organisation of any allegation, including formal and informal inquiries in relation to the treatment of any person." So the suggestion there by the Deputy Ombudsman boils down to the fact that you should ask your interviewee whether there have been any investigations in relation to their past employment. If I can go to exhibit 209, please? So this is a document, as the heading suggests, which is the employment application form of SP1.
Mr Duggan, I'm wondering whether you're not making submissions in opposition to submissions that weren't made. I don't understand, maybe missing something. I don't understand the... I don't understand the proposed findings to be critical of Sunnyfield's employment practices. The only finding that relates to the engagement of S P one is proposed finding fifteen, that S P one's failure to provide his complete work history along with not being asked to explain gaps in his C V when he was recruited impaired Sunnyfield from conducting thorough pre-employment checks. And I think Ms Eastman explained that that's not intended to be a finding that is adverse to Sunnyfield. So in a way, um you're a bit like the man who's lost something and is looking under the light. And he's asked by a passerby, what are you looking for and why are you looking there? He says, I've lost it was over there. Why are you looking under the light? Well, it's light. Um it does doesn't really, it's not really responsive to the particular submissions that have been made.
Well, i- i- it is in this sense, the the recommended finding, particularly recommended finding eleven is general, it's a generalised finding about specific policies and and processes failed. Um this is this is a particular policy and uh process which is recommended by the ombudsman, it appears, in finding out whether or not um you're dealing with someone who may have previous allegations made against them. Clearly, S P one has lied. The context and the fact that the ombudsman did not inform Sunnyfield of of this issue is relevant to the failure of the processes of the organisation.
Yes, I think it depends upon which processes are being referred to, and I accept that there is some ambiguity about that proposed finding, but it was the subject of explanation by Ms Eastman in the interchange between Ms Eastman and myself. Uh rather than deal with a submission that has actually not been made, can I suggest you revert to submissions that have been made against you?
Certainly, thank you, Commissioner, uh Chair. Um can I deal next with um submissions made um by Eliza or on behalf of Melissa? Um there was a submission made in relation to C C T V to the effect that Sunnyfield should give consideration uh to installing C C T V in the house. Um that that is a recommendation that is accepted or should be accepted by the commission in our submission. Um the the issue of C C T V is one that Sunnyfield would gratefully receive guidance on um from the commission. It raises a number of privacy issues, um Workplace Surveillance Act issues uh and and so on, and there may be circumstances in which some members of the House would like the C C T V, but others would not and so on. So any guidance that the commission was able to give would be well received. Um but the short point is that um we embrace that recommended finding by Eliza. Um in relation to the um second recommended finding that is sought by Eliza. Which is on the last page of Eliza's submissions. It it seeks a finding that Sunnyfield did not act, uh did not appropriately act on Eliza's concerns as to S P one's use of an unauthorised restrictive practice uh at a previous place of employment. Um uh the submissions indicate that this relates to information that was inquired about by Mister Swain of the previous provider and that that inquiry was not fruitful. Um however, the the commission did not hear from the previous service provider. Um there's no indication as to what S P one was talking about in terms of the unrestrained practice. Um nor did the commission have the benefit of hearing from Mister Swain about whether any further steps were taken or what um what if any action uh was conducted in relation to this particular issue. Um it's it's a uh it's a very fact-specific finding that is sought on an isolated question. Um Sunnyfield accepts that it's the sort of matter about which a service provider should inquire further about. Um but it's submitted that it's um not necessary for the commission to determine this particular issue in circumstances where it wasn't fully explored in the public hearing. Um can I deal with the issue of the termination notice? Sunnyfield expressed regret um and has, sorry, has expressed regret for the distress caused by the sending of the termination letters as that's been described. And as councillor assisting pointed out in her submissions this morning, it's a situation that certainly could have been handled better by Sunnyfield. Um it's submitted that Sunnyfield would never have evicted Melissa onto the street um without proper supports in place.
How did Ela- how did Eliza know that?
Quite.
At the ti- at the time she received the uh notice of termination, giving three months notice, how would how would Eliza have known?
She she would not have, um and it's not, what I've just submitted was not what was said in the letters. Um and it's accepted that Sunnyfield should have discussed the issues um fulsomely and personally um with Eliza and Melissa rather than sending legal letters.
All right, well, i- isn't that the relevant point, rather than the assertion which may now which may now be true? Uh but the assertion that Sunnyfield would never have evicted uh Melissa out into the out into the street, that the critical question is, what did Sunnyfield do? What impact would have it would have it had? And then why did Sunnyfield do it at the time when it did? They're the issues, aren't they?
Uh yes, and and certainly in relation to the to the first issue, um Sunnyfield has expressed regret, the C E O expressed regret a number of times about this, um and that there's no submission contrary to that, that is sought to be made. Um in relation to the current position, um councillor assisting referred the commission, I think, to the correspondence which has been sent to Eliza confirming that the notice of termination was no longer current. Um and um steps have also been taken for mediation to occur between Sunnyfield and and the three families consistent with the recommendations um sought by councillor assisting in that regard. If 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 the commission um would like to view that correspondence, I note that it's at page thirteen of an extra A to our submissions, but I don't I don't need to go to it uh for the moment.
I'm not sure that my version of an extra A actually has pagination. Um oh, it's sporadic, I see, it starts again. So you're referring at page thirteen to the letter about uh mediation conference.
Yes, there there is a reference there to the proposed mediation.
Yes.
Chair and Chair, Mister Doug, I'm sorry to interrupt at this point. Part of the difficulty in terms of making this material available is that uh the solicitors from the Royal Commission wrote to Sunnyfield solicitors on the second of September to ask about the documents annexed to the Sunnyfield submissions and what was the status of these documents and whether it was intended that these documents comprise new or further evidence. We have not received a response to that request. And so there is some uncertainty as to whether the documents Mister Duggan has referred to as annexes to the submissions are intended to be submissions or intended to be new evidence. So there may be some difficulty in locating this material because we have not tended this material and it's not part of the evidence or the exhibits that are available to the uh parties. So there's some uncertainty about it. Now, raising that now, Chair, because as you say, paginations, I'm clear on some aspects, and I don't want either the transcript or any parties or the commissioners who are uh participating remotely to uh get lost.
Yes, in fact, the pages are numbered, but in some cases the numbering is obscured, but more importantly, Mister Duggan, what is the status of these documents? And in particular, if you go, for example, to the document at page nine dated three June two thousand and twenty one, that's a document that doesn't appear to have an addressee, uh that is signed by Miss Cutter here. Um i- are you saying, or do you wish to tender this document as a letter that was in fact sent to Eliza?
Yes, although I'm not sure that that one, Chair, that you've referred to um was sent to Eliza. I I've got a redacted version and it's not clear who the addressee of that particular letter was, um but the the short point.
Well, I'm sorry, are you placing any reliance upon this material as establishing that Sunnyfield through Miss Cutter has made an apology to Eliza?
Yes, it's it it's in answer to paragraph five hundred and four of councillor assisting's submissions.
Well, if if you're putting this forward as evidence of an apology after the event, as it were, after the after the hearing, then we have to establish, don't we, the status of this material? You have to establish by evidence, I'm not suggesting it wasn't sent, but you have to establish by evidence that there was a letter that was sent that is in these terms, or if not in these terms, establishing the terms in which the letter of apology was in fact sent.
Certainly, I I hadn't understood that there was um an issue about this documentation being before the commission. Um but in paragraph five hundred and four of councillor assisting's submissions, um a recommendation is sought that Sunnyfield should clarify in writing um that the eviction notice sent to Eliza has been withdrawn. That that is an issue which is raised in this correspondence. Um five oh four B, Sunnyfield should engage in discussions with Eliza and so on. Well, there's discussion about that in this correspondence.
I understand that, but at the point I'm making follows from what Ms Eastman has said. It may well be the case that these letters, which appear in an extra A, were in fact sent on or about the date they bear, and that the reason they don't have the name in each case of an addressee is because it's been redacted, and because there are three letters of apology, one might infer that letters were sent to the supporters, parents, guardians of the three people in the group home. But it needs to be established, not just annexed to submissions that come in um after the hearing has been held, without any explanation as to what they actually are or an evidentiary support as to when they were sent. So you'll need to address that, and if you wish to have these documents in evidence, what I suggest you do is to have a short affidavit that uh annexes the documents and tells us when they were sent, so that we have an evidentiary basis for reaching the conclusion that they have been sent in those terms. And similarly, if you're relying upon any other materi- any of the other material in an extra A, then it does need to be verified in some way or another. If you do that within seven days and provide copies to the other parties, we can determine, a decision will have to be made about it. But on the basis of that uh material, a a determination can be made as to whether the evidence uh should, whether the material should be admitted into evidence, and councillor assisting may have some views about it.
But thank you, Chair. I there is a there is a letter from my instructing solicitors, which is part of an extra A which explains what this material is, but I I take on board what you've said and um uh I will take up the invitation to prepare an affidavit.
And what you might do, assuming that that evidence, that material comes and is admitted into evidence, you might have direct attention to the terms of their apology. On behalf of Sunnyfield, I extend to you an unreserved apology for the unacceptable actions and other matters that occurred at for not expressing our apology soon. I must say, reading that, I'm not at all sure what Sunnyfield's apologising for. So you might uh you might take that on board as well. Are they apologising for the fact that S P one misconducted himself? But we're not responsible, or are they saying we accept responsibility? Uh it looks awfully like a lawyer's letter.
I I take that on board, thank you, Chair. Um can I address the issue of um prevention of abuse? Um it's submitted that that any any findings that are made should accommodate the context um in which uh Sunnyfield took over the services uh and the challenges it faced from the very beginning in relation to this house. Um there appeared to be a a perfect storm, there was a a quick handover from a previous provider. Um there was a transition in which um the previous staff were gone by lunch on the first day, as I understand it. Um I I've I've referred to the fact that the information wasn't provided by the ombudsman, and I I won't make further submissions about that, but that is part of the context. Um there's also the fact that S P one lied in um his recruitment process, and there's a specific adverse finding sought in relation to that, which we would embrace. Um there was also a cultural reluctance um uh in within the workers i- in the house to report S P one because um there was a perception that he wielded power. Um one one way in which um he did wield power over the staff was that he had the power over the roster. Um and there was some um fear that if staff reported S P one further up the chain, that they would lose their shifts. Um the the reality is that this was a very complex situation and any findings that the commission make in relation to this should reflect that complexity in our submission. Um it it should, the the findings should also accommodate the fact that um things have improved dramatically since S P one and S P two have been removed. Um and should uh in our submission refer to the fact that the response by Sunnyfield uh in relation to learning of the full nature of S P one's conduct was entirely appropriate. Now, that's not a matter in dispute. But given that a number of adverse findings are sought against Sunnyfield, um it's submitted that a positive finding should be made in relation to its response. This is not a situation where there's been some sort of institutional cover-up, quite the opposite. Um as soon as Sunnyfield management were seized of the true nature of S P one's conduct, um S P one, S P uh sorry, and I should include S P two in that. Um they were both suspended, they never returned to work. Um things improved dramatically from that point, according to Ms Peord. Um and the N D I S uh was notified, the ombudsman was notified, the police were notified, and um Ms Peord was appointed as the independent investigator. Um that that of itself is um is a step which um was not acquired by law, but which Sunnyfield undertook uh as an appropriate response. Um the the other way in which Sunnyfield has responded is to um look at its own processes. The service coordinator of the house is no longer in charge of rostering. So the the cultural issue which existed with S P one um hopefully would no longer occur. Um an experienced service coordinator was put in charge of this particular house to improve things. Um the regional manager now has increased visibility and there's a protocol in place for random visits to be conducted um of shared living accommodation. And there's also uh increased face-to-face interaction with staff. One one of the issues identified by Ms Peord was that um staff uh were reluctant to come forward and were reluctant to speak to management. And so that um change is is designed to address that particular issue. So the submission being made is that those positive factors should be included in whatever findings the Commission makes in relation to prevention issues. The other issue I wanted to deal with was that of legal professional privilege. I did not understand, and I may be corrected, but I did not understand the evidence of the NDIS Commissioner to suggest that Sunnyfield had not been candid with the NDIS in terms of the information being provided about what happened in relation to the various complaints against SP One and SP Two. There was a question asked of the Commissioner Head and also of his counsel earlier today about legal professional privilege in relation to experts' reports. And as I understood Commissioner Head's evidence about that, it was not directed towards the Ms. Pior situation of an independent expert that was retained by Sunnyfield off its own back. I understood Commissioner Head's evidence to be directed towards a situation where the NDIS exercises its power to require an investigation to be carried out. In those circumstances, it would not be appropriate for legal professional privilege to be claimed over any expert report that was the product of that process. That certainly is a position that we wouldn't seek to be heard against. However, this situation was different. The purpose of the legal professional privilege in this case was because of the industrial relations dispute that was brewing between SP One and SP Two and Sunnyfield. And if there was a disclosure of the full reports to the NDIS or to the families, there was distinct possibility that privilege would be waived against SP One and SP Two. Now, there wasn't, and I don't understand there to be any suggestion, particularly by the NDIS, that there's anything underhanded in the claim for legal professional privilege in relation to the industrial relations dispute.
I don't think anybody's suggesting it was underhand. Why was the report privileged in the first place?
Because of the litigation or potential litigation involving SP One and SP Two, at least in part. I may be able to find a reference-
So the sole purpose of obtaining this document was for the purpose of giving legal advice or pending legal proceedings?
The issue of the purpose wasn't expressly put to any witness during the hearing. And so there is no direct evidence from any witnesses, I understand. There might have been something from Ms. Pior, but certainly no one within Sunnyfield or Sunnyfield's solicitors at the time as to what the purpose was. But one can draw the inference that at least some of the material in these reports was prepared specifically for the industrial relations dispute between SP One and SP Two. And that's borne out by the fact that when they were both terminated, the termination letters specifically referred to the findings of Ms. Pior and the language of Ms. Pior as reasons for the dismissal. Now, there were some questions about this during the public hearing, because it looked as though they were just being terminated because they hadn't followed policies and procedures. What really was happening, one apprehends, is that they were being given the Al Capone treatment. It was easier to get them on the tax fraud than anything more major. There were stronger grounds, the strongest grounds to dismiss them were on the breach of the protocols. And so Ms. Pior's report was used specifically for that purpose. And there certainly was the possibility of litigation arising out of that dismissal.
Yes. What do you say about the material from the Ombudsman that criticised Sunnyfield for not waiving privilege, if there was privilege?
Sorry, Chair, I don't, which material is that?
That was the question I asked Ms. Van Ness this morning, and she referred to a passage in the communication from the Ombudsman.
Criticising Sunnyfield for not releasing?
Yes.
I'm just trying to dig up that reference now, so I can answer that question. Was that in the letter of eighteen December?
I'm sure Ms. Van Ness can help us. It may be that my longer-term memory is better than my short-term memory, but I'd rather thought that's what happened this morning.
There was a lot that was said this morning, Chair, so I may have missed that, Jim.
If I can assist, the document I referred to was, I think, Exhibit thirteen, was it two-two-seven? Or just checking if there was another one in Exhibit thirteen, three-oh-seven. That was the letter from the Ombudsman to Sunnyfield. And on page two, it was by reference to the NDI terms of business. Now, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to, Chair, but that's the document that I certainly referred to. I thought it was-
That's my recollection. Thank you. Well, if we can't find the relevant passage, we'll just pass that one by, I think, just for the moment. There is, by the way, just so you're aware of it, Mr. Duggan, a page four hundred and five of the transcript, Ms. Cutter here was asked a series of questions by Ms. Eastman as to the purpose of Sunnyfield asking its external lawyers to engage Ms. Pior. So I'll just draw that to your attention.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. I think perhaps move on from that issue. What comes next?
Yes, I have no further submissions, Commissioner. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I will ask Commissioner Galbally first, whether she has any questions she would like to put to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've got a couple of questions. Just to follow up the Chair regarding the composition of board, I'd just like to know if there are plans on recruiting independent disabled leaders of whatever disability, including intellectual disability, for the board, and within what timeframe? If you could come back to me on that, that would be, unless you know the answer?
I don't, unfortunately, but I'll certainly make inquiries.
My second question was to pick up Ms. Eastman's reference, and yours too, I think, to supportive decision-making for potential members of the board or the SLT with an intellectual disability. And it just brought me to the question of, does Sunnyfield have a process for providing supportive decision-making for all residents so that they can exercise their choice and control? That's the first question on that topic. And then, are support staff trained in supportive decision-making? And if so, could you please provide the Commission with the training modules?
Thank you.
Is that, you're frozen. Don't have you unfrozen, Mark.
That's the effect of your question.
Commissioner, they're excellent questions. I don't know the answers off the top of my head, but I will obtain the answers and provide them to you.
Thank you. My third lot of questions is that Sunnyfield agrees in principle that it is desirable for occupancy and support services to be provided by separate entities so that a resident is not evicted if they have problems with support services or support services break down. So my first question is that Sunnyfield reports that they've set up Gateway. Is Gateway, as a separate company, is Gateway able to evict residents? Under what circumstances? And would Sunnyfield recommend to Gateway to evict services as the only service provider? So that's a question. And then I was just very struck by, despite Sunnyfield embracing the separation of occupancy from support services, that they see it as quite complex and difficult to have numbers of support services coming into a residence. So I'd like to understand their concerns more in that, have they done any modelling about the financial or rostering or other impacts of really enabling choice and control for all residents in a single group home in their services so that they can allow that separation? I'd like to know if there is any modelling that's been done, and any plans to do any.
Certainly. Thank you for raising those issues. I'll take instructions and answer those queries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McEwan, do you have any questions of Mr. Duggan?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick points from me. Firstly, to pick up again on that issue, Mr. Duggan, of competition of the board, I really want to understand, and I acknowledge your written and oral submissions, if I can take you to paragraph thirty-nine in your written submission. And it says, if Sunnyfield was not managed by a board with suitable professional experience, it may risk insolventy, financial hardship, et cetera. So to help me really understand what you're saying, is it Sunnyfield's condition that, say, a person with an intellectual disability who has expertise, say, lived expertise of having lived in a group home, could not sit on a board, Sunnyfield board, along with other people with relevant professional expertise? Can you help me understand your submission on that point? Thank you.
Thank you for raising that. That's not the submission that was sought to be put. That paragraph was addressing adverse finding four, which was talking about the weighting between people with commercial experience and financial experience, and the relative weighting with people with direct experience of providing supports. And perhaps I was reading too much into that, but it appeared to be a criticism in relation to those with the financial experience, as opposed to those with support services experience. And so it was really addressing that issue, not the representation of people with disability on the board.
All right. Thank you. I think you just froze, and I think you concluded your answer. Is that right? Thank you. All right. And just one more point or question from me, Mr. Duggan. Paragraph forty-eight, where you talk about where it may be undesirable for board to pay regular visits for, for example, that accommodation is someone's home. You may not be able to answer it directly, and I think you have addressed it in bits and pieces across, but my question is, what would be an effective way for the board and senior leadership team to be informed of what's happening in an effective and efficient way of issues, say, in the group home we've discussed in this hearing? Thank you.
Yes, we're certainly, certainly home visits is one way, certainly. Rather than it coming from the board, there may also be a process in which open invitations can be made by the residents if they've got any concerns for the board members to come out and discuss those with them. The other issue was one that I've already mentioned, and that's one of board subcommittees or other suitable regular meetings in which issues can be aired. So, for example, if you had a monthly shared living meeting, anyone with concerns wanted to raise them, it maybe raised it in that particular forum. But there are certainly different ways. There could be some ability for the voice of the people in the home to be communicated and heard by the board at board level.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner McEwan. Mr. Duggan, just a couple of questions that arise from your paragraphs one hundred and three and one hundred and four, where you refer to the prospect of sheeting home responsibility to individuals and saying there's an absence of procedural fairness. I just want to be clear about who it is you're representing. You appear on behalf of Sunnyfield.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
That means, does it not, that you're making submissions on behalf of the board of Sunnyfield?
Yes, but not in their capacity as individual directors. And the criticism in adverse finding twenty-one really seeks to sheet home responsibility against individuals. And any reasonable member of the public, reading that finding, if it were made, would think that the individual members of the board had done something wrong.
That's not what finding twenty-one says. It says, responsibility lies with Sunnyfield, its board, by which I take it is meant its board as a collective decision-making body, its CEO, and the senior leadership team. Your role representing Sunnyfield gives you the opportunity, does it not, to answer that on behalf of the board, and indeed, that's what you've done.
Well, no, I would resist that proposition, Chair, for this reason, that someone reading that would think that there was an individual responsibility or individual criticism that was being made in that adverse finding, albeit collectively, and that given the serious-
I understand your interpretation. I'm not sure I agree with it, but I understand what you're putting. And as far as Ms. Cutter here is concerned, Ms. Cutter here gave extensive evidence, and you have made in your submissions, extensive references to her evidence and supporting her account of events. So I take it that the submissions that you have made have been made on Ms. Cutter's behalf. She's had the opportunity to have submissions made on her behalf by you, and you have done so correctly at some length, and we will take them into account. I'm right in that assumption, aren't I?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Can I, Chair, can I just develop the point in relation to the individual members of the board? If there is an apprehension that some people may read a finding to be a collective one relating to a group of individuals, there may be serious consequences for those individuals should such a finding be made. Now, that's another factor that is referred to in our written submissions, and we would ask the Commission to take into account.
Yes, well, that will depend upon whether any findings are made that sheets home responsibility to individual members of the board. At present, I don't understand any of the findings sought to do that. There is a difference between the board as a collective decision-making entity and individual members of the board, and I'm not suggesting this is the case here, but in the hypothetical case, it's a different situation where someone is alleging that a particular member of the board failed to comply with his or her duties under the Corporations Act or otherwise. This is not the area we're in.
I can't say any more than what's in the written submissions, I've already said.
Yes, thank you. Can we take it that these submissions have been endorsed by the board of Sunnyfield?
Can I take instructions on that?
I would have thought you would know, but-
I don't know whether there's been any formal endorsement, but I just want to clarify that.
All right.
I don't know whether there is any formal endorsement. I don't have those instructions.
All right. Well, I'll leave that with you. And in the absence of anything further, I suppose we can draw- And in the absence of anything further, I suppose we can draw whatever inferences are appropriate. The principal reason I ask is paragraph 88 of your submissions. And I wonder why it was thought appropriate to make in effect criticisms of Eliza and attribute a good deal of what happened to what might be described as in effect, an allegation of Eliza's intransigence or persistence. The difficulty with that, as I see it, is that it may suggest that Sunnyfield, through its board or senior decision-makers, hasn't really understood the significance of what has happened here. And I'd just like you to address that. It just seems an odd thing to find in submissions, having regard to the evidence and having regard to the concessions that have been made fairly, why these submissions would make these points that are, in effect, critical of Eliza? Do you want to withdraw paragraph 88, do you think?
Well, I have to seek some instructions about that. But I refer the commission to paragraph 89, and it makes it clear in that paragraph that no findings are sought in relation to the issues that are raised in paragraph 88. What the paragraph was designed to illustrate was that there was substantial friction between a family member and Sunnyfield.
Yeah, but nobody could read that, I don't think, without inferring that the intent was to blame Eliza.
Well, that certainly is not a submission that's been made.
Well, I can't think of any other reason why this would be put at the moment. You might enlighten me, but it's difficult to understand why this material is there. And as I say, one possible inference is that Sunnyfield, perhaps the board, hasn't really grasped the significance of what has occurred.
The purpose of the submission was to demonstrate that there are situations in which there are significant breakdowns between families and guardians and the service provider. And that's what is referred to in paragraph 89, the submission.
But the critical issue is why there was a breakdown, that's the point.
And that's not a point that paragraph 88 is addressing. Paragraph 88 is addressing a different point.
All right, thank you very much. I'll just ask Ms Eastman if there is anything that she wants to say in response to the submissions that have been made on behalf of the parties that have been given leave to appear.
Thank you Chair, no, I don't wish to make any submissions in reply, and I thank the legal representatives, particularly in the circumstances that we're in, appearing remotely, for their submissions. We read them very carefully, and we've given them a lot of consideration, and I'm indebted to their participation this afternoon.
Yes, thank you, Ms Eastman. I too add my thanks on behalf of the commissioners for the very detailed written submissions that have been received, both from council assisting and the parties given leave to appear, and for the helpful oral submissions that have been made today. As I indicated in my opening remarks, these submissions, written and oral, will be taken into account by the commissioners in determining what, if any, findings should be made and what, if any, recommendations should be made arising out of the evidence that has been given at public hearing 13. And the parties can rest assured that not only have the submissions been considered very carefully up to date, in the sense of being read very carefully and thought about, they will be given further careful consideration before any determinations are made.
Chair, I think all that's left is, the parties, some of the parties have taken questions on notice or indicated that they'd like to provide a more detailed response. I think in respect of some of the questions you've suggested seven days, I'm not sure whether the parties can give an indication as to whether seven days is sufficient for them to respond, or you wish to make some direction in relation to timeframes for response.
Well, perhaps the biggest burden falls on Mr Duggan, is seven days enough for you to respond to the questions in particular that Commissioner Galbally asked?
I'm just looking sideways, Chair.
For help, yes.
14 days might be more realistic if I.
This is the customary interchange that takes place at the end of a hearing. All right, 14 days is fine.
Chair, if I can say that if we can do it more quickly, we will. Can I also answer one of the queries that's been raised a moment ago? I'm instructed that the board did endorse the submissions.
Thank you very much. Ms Viness, I think in the circumstances, the sensible thing is to give 14 days for you as well.
Chair, I don't believe I took anything on notice.
Didn't you? Oh, I've just assumed that in your usual helpful role, there would have been something that you were going to provide us with. That's fine, is there anybody else who's promised to do something? Mr O'Brien, you were the one, and Mr Dyton, both of you were going to give us some extra material, we'll make that 14 days. So, any additional material that is to be provided in response to issues that have been raised during the course of the hearing by any of the parties should be provided in writing within 14 days, copies provided to all other parties who have been given leave to appear or to council assisting as the case may be. Mr Dyton, is there anything else that you wish to put about that?
No, thank you Chair.
Mr O'Brien, you're content with it?
Yes, thank you Chair.
All right, thank you. We will adjourn, the next hearing, as I've indicated previously, will commence one week from today, Friday the 17th, and that will be dealing with issues concerning First Nations people with disability and their home care. Thank you, we'll adjourn.
The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is adjourned.